File with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 3rd, 2020. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Christine, does she have her flag? If not, I have one. You got one? You got one. Okay. I have, I mean, I have a flag, so. Hey, you ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the representative, one nation. Under God, with liberty and. We have no presentations. We do have minutes to approve from April 27th, May 4th, and May 11th. Would someone like to move the minutes?
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. They are approved. Sorry about that. At this point in the meeting, we welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate this. If you would like to talk, click on Participants, and then raise your hand next to your name, and Anthony will unmute you. We ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, and we do have a timer, just so you can be aware of how long you're speaking. When you are unmuted, please give your name and address. And if you have something written that you're reading from, please submit it to the clerk. So, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? I see Johanna.
Okay, yes. I'm Johanna Whistenger. I'm chairperson of the Environmental Commission, and at the last meeting, I heard Chairman Mr. McQueen invite comments or any kind of questions regarding the quarry, and I would like to make a comment. I'm going to read it, so that I economize some words. I want to focus on the concerns for the harmful impact on materials recovery facility operation that may have, that it may have on the quality of the air, water, and soil within the quarry. I want to thank the council for successfully negotiating the reduction of diesel fuel emissions. But to this concern, I'd like to make suggestions for two recommendations to the members of this council. One, I would like the municipality to engage in an independent firm to periodically assess the environmental conditions within the quarry. This would be in addition to the DEP inspections and auxiliary to the municipal zoning officer. I heard an endorsement by Councilwoman Canus, and certainly, there's an important role for our zoning officer, but I will give my rationales after I, for why I think this is a good idea, after I give you my two recommendations. Also, in the same light, I'd like you to consider using this firm for a baseline soil test. If it's not already a prerequisite of DEP or the DEP, I don't, I don't know. I have not seen this particular agreement. Two, I'd like the council, this is maybe difficult, but I would like, then I would like you to safeguard in some way, a long-term practices for considering the environmental health of air, water, and soil, which potentially could be impacted by the operations. I'll give you my reasons. Let's see what I have there. Okay. I, I think that for the first one, you need an expert in this particular field, who has the equipment, who has the connection, the networking, so that the right thing is done. I don't think any municipal zoning officer could really do what an environmental engineer would do, who is experienced in that. Also, I think it's just much cleaner. It takes away some of the emotion of having, the town, the municipal is going to have to negotiate and work with them. I think this makes it much more objective. And I see, oh, I have 18 seconds. Okay. So, for rationale for long term, in 2015, this kind of flew by. A lot of people were on vacation, I know, but, but three years later, I mean, so we had five councilmember vote for it, and a planning board that assisted with this. But three years later, in 2018, because we had a fire lit on, we had more information, we had a community that was very concerned. I mean, I was shoulder to shoulder downstairs, on a lower level, and there were people outside who couldn't get in. So that there was this tremendous turnaround, and now I heard six, five of you all agree that this is not, you know, with reservations. So what I'm saying is, we need something in place, so that good practices are, are long-term, and it has nothing to do with what, with, with politics, or partisan, or interest. As well as you can, and that's hard, and I don't know how you do it, by laws, whatever, but we need to have something that is stable and transparent and long-range.
Okay. You went a little over, but that's okay. Well, okay.
I tried not to. I really did.
Yeah. Oh, you did good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see, I guess, Carrie.
Carrie, yeah.
Hi, everybody. I'm Carrie Hazelton, 397 Mine Brook Road. I'm speaking today for the Environmental Commission about something that we'd like to do for the class of 2020. Last meeting, we got together on Zoom, and we brainstormed about something lasting and meaningful that we could do for this special class that's graduating. And we would like to plant a garden. So I'm coming to you today to tell you what we hope to do, and ask for your help in getting it done. We want to plant a native species garden of Virginia bluebells and bleeding hearts, and another species that Peter Bernbaum would help us choose, on the triangle, which is borough-owned land between Childsworth and Alcott Avenue. Not a big garden, but a garden that would, I think the bleeding hearts would be particularly meaningful for this class and this group, and to remember this year. We would work with Public Works. We've got the funding in place. We had an angel come forward within the Environmental Commission, and we've all stepped up to help, in case it gets more expensive than we thought it would be, to do a garden in that public area there, visible sphere, a nice thing to do for town, an underutilized space that we could beautify, that everyone who's doing so much walking and biking, and eventually driving, would, would, would see it and enjoy and remember what this, the special nature of this class. From the council, we of course would need permission to use borough and land. Secondly, we would, we would ask only that we have a little bit of help in getting the soil ready with the machine and a little bit of John McDowell magic and the gang. And so that, that's our idea. We just think that it could be something that, that could be enjoyed for just decades to come. It requires no care after we get it in. It will blend in with the lawn that's there, and it will fade away in the summertime, and then just come back year after year. And that's just something we would like to do, if you agree that that was a good idea.
Thank you, Carrie. That's, I think, a terrific idea. We do own that. Yes, Jack? That is our property. Do we need to do a resolution to give permission for them to use it?
I think if you reach a consensus, they can proceed.
Okay.
On the record.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's a really nice idea. Thank you so much for putting it together.
Carrie, what is the property again? I heard, so you said Alcott Square? We're not talking the.
No, no, not Alcott Square.
Alcott Avenue. I'm sorry. Was that Chad?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alcott Avenue, as you drive up past the high school on the right, it goes off to the left a little bit, and Childsworth Avenue cuts into the right, and it makes a triangle of land, like an island that has just one house on it. There are beautiful native trees there already, and we would use this as an understory garden, just something, something to beautify that area. We know that it's not really appropriate for a pocket park, because there's going to be eventually someday, a lot of traffic there, and we don't want to encourage people to be like lingering, but they already are walking, and there's a sidewalk right along it, so I think that it would be just really nice to have it. I'm, I'm hoping that John will agree that we can do it right on the apex of that triangle, so we'll have the most visibility, but of course, I know that they sometimes.
There's a bit of traffic on Childsworth, but not so much on Alcott. I walk by there frequently, and I've always wondered why we don't have a bench there, just for people to sit and contemplate the trees. It's, it's.
And that would be, that would be up to council and to Chief Valentine and Mr. McDowell. That's just what I had been hearing about, that, that particular site. I think it's pretty close to great for a pocket park, but I don't know the traffic counts.
Would you have, Carrie, would you have some kind of a marker or a sign saying, you know, project for class of 2020 by the Environmental Commission, just so people know?
We, we could do that. We could, we could certainly do that. We, you know, we, we, like, that would make it, you know, even more meaningful, but, yes.
Memorable, you know, because in the future, people will know why it's there.
Right. Like, we have trees sometimes that are.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, yes, that would be fine. We'd have to get some more money together, but we'll, we'll do it.
Anyone, any other council people? Are we all okay with that? No objections?
It's a great idea.
Yep, not by me.
Okay. I think that means, yes.
Okay, so we'll be looking for a fall planting, probably, for next spring's bloom. That way, we don't have to worry too much about maintaining it or cutting the ground now. We can look towards fall and make a good plan. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thanks, Carrie. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Olivia Manning.
Where is she? Is she on there? Oh, I gotta go up. Okay, let's do Olivia.
Hello. This is not Olivia. This is Tim.
Okay, hi, Tim.
I don't live here, so.
I'm here, too.
She's here, too. I, I just wanted to chime in real quick, and so it's Tim Manning from Wavelength Audio Video in Town. A couple of things. One, I wanted to say thank you for our, to our mayor, to Mary Jane. There was a great conversation that I had today, which inspired some, some positive business actions in town. I know it's a very difficult moment, and it's been continuously being difficult, but there's been some, some headway, and obviously, some stores opening and stuff like that. And the idea of kind of getting groups together to speak a little bit more about what we can do, what our issues are and stuff like that, I want to be heavily involved in that. As you may know, I've, I've already done things like working with the police department to, to help me figure out how to donate some, you know, baby monitors to Moorestown Memorial Hospital. They helped me out with that. We've done some disinfecting of emergency vehicles in Basking Ridge, and in our detail center. And one thing that I, I think that's important, I brought it up to you, Mary Jane, today in the other meeting, and I'd like to just say at the council meeting, is that I'd like to offer my store to anyone who, during this pandemic, if they, if they don't have any, a storefront large enough for safe distancing, the six-foot distance or anything like that, I'd like to offer my store for somebody to come in and take it over for a little while, to help them with their business in town, because I think that, you know, I would appreciate if anybody did that for me, if I had a small store and I couldn't do safe distancing. I don't know how many stores in town are like that, but my storefront is open. My entire inventory can be moved out of the store and leave room for somebody else. So thank you, Mary Jane, for the opportunity to share that with everybody today. And then I wanted to thank the police department for helping keep me updated on things that I can do for my business, what I'm limited to, and all of that, and, you know, kind of make sure that I'm doing safe practices of my business in town. So just want to say thank you to both of you guys for that, and then offer my store up for whoever could use it.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. For those of you, we just, I had had a brief Zoom meeting, and with Chad and myself, and some of the local businesses, just looking at ways that, you know, asking them for their experiences and what problems they're having, and then how, when, when the switch is thrown, you know, how ready they are, and what kind of practices they're going to put in place. And actually, I was pretty impressed. I know that few chats, they've really been thinking about this, and there were some, and these are things that we're going to forward on to the governor's office. There were some great practices, for the salon especially. They thought of everything to minimize that contact, because I think the issue with salons and some of the personal care things is the amount of time that you, you know, you spend with a customer. It's not just come and go. You're sitting there for 45 minutes getting your hair done, and they, the way Lynn Ann from Burnham Salon explained it, is she could cut it down to like 10 minutes if you come in with your hair washed. They don't do the blowout. They wait outside, close the waiting room. Really well thought out. So we're going to hopefully keep that conversation going, maybe put a task force together, so that they help each other in getting ready to open up. So, and we wanted to ask them how they felt about the enforcement issues that we're going to be dealing with tonight, and how some of those might impact them. So hopefully, we'll keep that conversation going. Okay. Anyone else? Ed English.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I thank you for approving the farmer's market again. I just wanted to make sure there weren't any questions, and I just wanted to maybe give you an, an update that, like, for instance, today, we went down and chalkmarked the spots where, where everyone would be, and I sent a little list of the barricades we're going to need to Lieutenant Gardner, as per Chief Valentine's instructions, and there were like 12 barricades. So it's, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty nice plan. I am going to put up this weekend in the Burnsville News, and then on the website, too, a map that shows the layout, so everyone can get a feeling for that. And we have had one article. We will get another press release type article explaining that there won't be, and, well, I, I hope we get another, another article. The article we got was very nice, explaining that no pets, one, one member per family, social distancing, masks, and some of the, some of the small points that Burnham's Health Department and Jeff Hadman have been, you know, reiterating, and the farmers themselves know from other markets, they've already opened that. Just so that everyone knows, the farmers are really ecstatic about the reception they're getting, even with the social distancing. And the only conclusion seems to, or the feeling about it is that people really are looking for something local. They, they like supermarkets, but they're not too, you know, keen on, on going into them, and it's good to be outdoors. And they like the farmers, our farms especially. So I, more things will be coming, a few things on the website, and, and we're looking for volunteers, and I think we have enough for opening day, and so hopefully, we'll get some more, and there's room for 49 seconds of questions, if anyone has any. Are we okay? Does anyone have a question?
I have a question, Ed, about, because when I saw the, the, how people were going to move through, it talked about no-contact payment. Did, I know we talked about this last time, but was anything worked out with no-contact payment? I know you guys were looking at Square and things like that for the vendors.
Yeah, we went, well, so today, we did it in chalk. Oh, paint? What do you, I'm sorry. I'm not, I don't understand the question, Jen. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but for the contactless payment, so if somebody's going to come through and they point to something, they pick it.
Oh, okay.
How do they pay?
I was, I was thinking about what I did all, all morning. Okay. So pay with me. I'm not sure if every farmer or vendor has a no-touch terminal. I, I think you've been seeing them around more often, where people put them in, and you don't have to punch in a number, and the person behind the desk doesn't have to punch in a number. That's pretty common now. So as far as I know, they all have that. And as far as the other markets are concerned, they've been saying that if someone really doesn't have a credit card at all, and they want to pay cash, they put the cash box out on the table, because we're Burnsville, at least that's what I've been advised, and people put in the money, and they make their own change, and people watch each other. So I, I, I don't think it's going to, it's, the no-touch is, is really a work in progress, but it seems like it's gotten to the point where it's not a worry.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the update.
So, Ed, this is, this is Chad. Just, I know you're going to probably stick around for the meeting. I know that we were in some communication this morning. There may be a chance where we need a small portion of the parking lot for the resolution and discussion we're going to have this afternoon, or this evening now. I, I don't think it'll impact what you're doing much, or if all, but just hang around, because I want, I want your opinion to make sure that this is all going to work together in concert.
Okay.
So you need anything else from us, Ed?
No, I know. I, thank you. Yeah. Well, the volunteers would be, and I think a number of people have volunteered, but it's hard getting volunteers in the summer, and so you really need a backlog, as it were, of volunteers. So the more, the better. And, and I think, I think what's good about it is people are outdoors, and even though the farmer's market is really not encouraging the kind of social get-together, just actually, a volunteer is actually in a position to be a social gadfly, as it were, with the customers, because they're the ones that are saying, oh, it's nice to see you. You have any questions? You want to keep moving? Do you have any, you know, how are you doing? So I, I think it's a nice position for volunteers to be in, as long, you know, just keeping their distance. It's, you know, to encourage it. So I think there's a role for them.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we'll get you enough.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard from the public on any topic? I'm not seeing any more hands up. If you do want to, just click on Participants, and then next to your name, raise your hand. Okay, I do not see any, so I will close the public session. And we will move on to ordinance. I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1841, and ordinance concerning street excavations and supplementing and amending Chapter 14 of the Borough Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? Okay. Not seeing any hands go up. So I will close the public hearing. I guess this is Christine. Oh, we don't even have to, would you want to move that?
Sure. Any council members have any questions or comments, or?
Yeah, so Christine, when, when reading it, it was, so obviously, lots of underscore. In principle, what is the, the, the principal change here? And I think I know what the answer is, but I want to make sure that I'm not misinterpreting.
I guess the confusion or issues were cropping up with people that were unaware that there was this policy that the borough was following about a moratorium on the road after it's been paved. So this, not only does it clarify that policy, but it has changed some of the, the structure of the, the fees involved. So if you look at section two, right at the end, page, on page five, it's just a lot more clear and easy to understand. In addition to this, the, Jeff Price is also on this Zoom call, and he can, if we can unmute him, he'll talk about maybe the additional steps that the zoning and construction office is taking to alert residents, you know, in the home purchase process, so that they know that it's potentially an issue for them when they purchase a home.
Yes, that is correct. I received a list from John McDowell of all the streets that have a moratorium, ranging from only one year left to five years. And I'll get a new list this year, when the, this year's roads get paved. So that list is with the construction department, and also with the zoning department. And we will be checking when people come in for permits, who, what roads they're on, and whether their road has a moratorium. We're also working on getting that information into our spatial data logic, which is the computer system we all use, so that there will be some flag that will come up when a construction permit is issued for certain events. And that could be an above, an underground storage tank removal, which normally indicates that you may be changing to gas for any sewer line changes or any septic issues. So there are certain areas that might, may trigger road opening. Some of them will not. But we're covering the bases by making the whole street and the people on the street aware that there is a moratorium.
And that's sort of the way I read it, too, Jeff. So it doesn't necessarily make the approval process more challenging or different. The fee structure changed. It's more of a communication about the fact that this shouldn't happen.
Well, it's a proactive way to avoid the roads opening. And I don't think it's been a serious issue for the most part, but it hasn't been updated in a very long time, so we wanted to get it clarified and help, help people who are in this situation understand the process, I guess.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay.
So I can move to pass ordinance number 2020-1841 on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Christine, would you like to introduce the next ordinance, because that's also.
I move that ordinance number 2020-1842, appropriating the sum of $125,780 for the milling, paving, and striping of Meeker Road, Mount Harmony Road, and Lakeview Road. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, Monday, June 8th, 2020.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Any comments on that?
So is this one, are these some of the roads that, because we had talked about holding back on some of the road repairs in order to help our budget, given the circumstances with COVID? Are these roads that are related to that, or they're, they're outside of that, because they have different funding?
This is, Christine, remind me if this is correct. We're, we're repairing a road that New Jersey American Water tore up, and they gave us the.
Yes.
They're giving us the money to fix it, so we'll take it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right. We will have a public hearing on that, on our next meeting on June 8th. We now have resolutions 2144 through 2154. Anyone have questions, comments, want to discuss any of those separately?
I don't have the exact number, but I'd like to pull out the one related to the, the courts.
147.
Yep.
On a 154, with the pool fees, is that presupposed, we're opening the pool?
It's got three different scenarios with different dates, so it's, it's really just prorating the costs, depending on when and if we open.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Anyway, talk to other conversations about that, just clarifying.
Yeah.
And Gina, I'm assuming this was a recommendation of the, of the Rec Committee? This came directly from them?
Yes. Yeah. Ted Dolan has been working really closely with Neil in putting all of that together.
And the, go ahead.
No, I'm just, so yeah, if we can pull one, probably, let's pull 154, because I think there's a couple of questions. I don't object to it, except for a couple of questions, so we'll do with that when the turn comes.
Okay. The, Jack, I just had a question on 153. This is allowing the Environmental Commission to accept donations? Is that what that's doing?
Yes, I believe so, Ralph. Yeah.
So it's setting up a separate fund, like we did with the banners and that kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on the resolutions? So we can move 2144 through 2153, and not 147. Do I have a motion for those?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call on those.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Ms. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, 2147 is expansion of the existing shared municipal court by including Bernard Township. I believe this time we got the full document and the addenda where that attachment A that had the actual costs worked out. So discussion?
Well, the question I had that I raised last meeting was partially answered. The question was, would there be cost savings to the borough? And if I read that appendix correctly, we would accrue about $2,500 a year in savings. But what it did not answer was how that might affect the efficiency of the court. Now, if I looked at it correctly, we were we were getting one and a half days a week, I think it said. Is that what we're currently getting? Is would there be any reduction in terms of court time? Would there be any slowdown? I didn't I didn't see that addressed.
Doctor, if I could speak, the court at the moment is only one day on Tuesdays. So this is an additional half a day.
Okay, so we're going to gain time. Okay.
That seems counterintuitive to me, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, and if I recall, I thought that we had to like pay an initial like entry fee, if you will, when this first started. Is that true or no? We just pay our monthly or yearly, whatever it is? When this was formed, there was no entry fee per se. There was a there was just a breakdown by tickets and volume and staff and there was a bill was just a figure was arrived at and just given to each municipality. And then as the years have progressed, if there was any increases or decreases, it was just done at, you know, at that at the end of each year. There is a true up period, as they as they call it, at the end of the year.
Well, that raises an interesting question. And what do we have any cost accounting that what they're charging us, the $94,000 or something like that? You know, that that's in fact what it costs to run the court on our behalf?
We haven't audited those numbers to my knowledge, so.
I mean, could our contribution be less is really the question? And what are those numbers based on?
It's based on.
Percentage.
Right, it's.
Well, I know it's a percentage, but I mean.
Tickets, it's 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 a number of different things. But it's all calculated by Bedminster, who is the host community. And it's their responsibility to put that together. But and that's what they've come up with and it's been.
Well, how much of that information in terms of their methodology do they share with us?
Well, they break it down on the one page here where they've got what the judge's salary, the court administrator, the clerk, the pension costs, that's all broken out, the health insurance for those people.
Right. And and we pay 20% of that from Bernard's.
Right.
Of the total cost.
Yeah, I saw that, but.
20%, I thought I thought our percentage is like 5.6%.
Looks like.
It's 20.
P. Pet Gladstone is just under 20. We're a little over 20 and Bedminster is almost 60.
What I was struck by was how much more activity in the courts Bedminster has than us. And we're relatively the same population. They're only they're less than 1,000 people more than we are.
A big piece of 287 and 202, 206. So they get a lot more violations.
Well, they do that three times as many as we do.
Yeah.
Either that or we're more law buddy and I don't know.
Yeah, that struck me too, though, Jeff.
So what is our recourse? I'm interested to hear from the chief and from Jeff in regards to the efficiency when when summonses are given to the court of them getting through them in a timely manner. What's the recourse if if there's this merger? And let's just say that the court time is not sufficient for our needs. How long does it take for us to get out of the contract or change course if this isn't working according to our wishes?
I don't know, Jack.
Is there a cancellation clause?
I'm just looking. It may be terminated at the end of the calendar year by providing written notice of the termination no later than September 1 of the calendar year. In which the shared services, yes, we can get out by giving notice by September 1. The term actually goes through December 31, 2022. But we could get out at the end of 2020 or at the end of 2021.
My personal is, sorry, Tom.
So Ralph, did we see a similar reduction of like 25%, which is what Bernard Township looks like? They're saving about 25% going this route versus maintaining their own court system? If you look at the spreadsheet they sent us, did we see 25% savings from independently operating a court to doing it with this joint way previously when we first joined?
We did say we did. There was a savings. I'm trying to recall, Tom. I believe it was actually a little bit above that, not much more, but we absolutely saw savings back when we started.
So I mean, dropping out of this, you know, agreement, yeah, obviously we could do it. But if we do do it, then we have to shoulder 100% of the cost for us.
Yep.
Running an independent court system.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, I think moving towards shared services is generally a good thing. However, one plus one in this deal isn't equal two. Because if we're maintaining one and a half days, we're adding PG and the services go up, I just want to make sure that we don't have have at least thought through what the out would be. So.
When we said one and a half days, we have one day a week right now and we'll have one and a half days in the new agreement. Is that what I hear?
Yes, right now, the court goes for the three towns that are involved are goes one full day. And sometimes goes, you know, late into the afternoon and early evening, but it's done in a day. And from my understanding with talking to Bedminster is that they're going to increase that to by a half a day to accommodate four towns with with the volume of Bernard Township involved.
So so hang on, that changes my understanding. So we don't get a dedicated day and a half. They're going to run for a day and a half. They're adding a half a day to their schedule with the PG addition.
Bernard.
Yeah, burnt, yeah.
Bernard Township.
Yeah.
Well, that's different. That's not what the spreadsheet, actually, the spreadsheet indicated, at least would seem to indicate that we get a day and a half. So again, this gets me back to my question. Because we're a lower volume than both Bedminster and certainly Bernard Township, are we going to be penalized in that regard because of our low volume and not have access to the court the way we want it?
But I don't understand how they obviously they're scheduling based on the when they get the summons, not where they're coming from. In other words, they don't say, okay, Bernardsville, you're up from 8:30 to 10:00 and then, you know, it's just as if they were all one town. So whoever's called for that day, you go.
Okay, so that's that's okay. Well, that's what I needed to understand. It never really was fully explained that that we're all treated as if we're one big town and it's just first come, first served.
Yes.
So if if those other towns have an inordinate volume increase and we stay static, we may not be able to process our cases as quickly as we normally would.
Well, just on this one point, it says four towns, 1.5 full court sessions twice per month. So that that's saying there's 1.5 sessions twice a month in the new up plan. And the old plan was what?
Twice a month?
Is that correct? I don't see it written here. I'm looking at the attachment. I see the new plan. It says four towns, 1.5 full court sessions twice per month. So that would be like three court sessions a month. Are we saying that there's only two court sessions a month right now?
Don't believe any more than that.
Court sessions?
That's my understanding, Tom.
And that's what we've we've been doing.
Since day one.
Okay.
And we haven't had any problems with people not getting hurt, no cases not getting there?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the chief and I mean, I haven't heard a delay in hearing cases from the zoning enforcement. Jeff, have you had any problems with delay in getting court appearances?
And no, not not recently. I mean, our volume is significantly less than the chief's.
Yeah.
Uh, but just to go back to that other point, it appeared to me as if that court was meeting every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday.
So I don't know where the disconnect is there.
Also, Jeff, Jeff Price, you said that in answer to Councilman McQueen's question, you said not recently, which implies that there had been in the past. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't had too many summonses over the last four or five months. So, you know, any of the data I have is last year.
Right.
And as I said, the last time prosecutor's situation went through one, two, three, four different prosecutors in the in the course of a couple of months. And, you know, our summonses were delayed a little bit then, but but since then, whatever we've had has has been taken care of in a timely manner.
Okay.
Chief, have you been generally pleased and satisfied?
He's muted a lot. I'm here. I'm sorry. I was just trying to find you on the screen here.
Yeah.
No, yeah, we've been generally satisfied with the court. We really haven't had any issues. They're pretty good about scheduling our contested cases when when our officers are working so we don't have to, you know, pay out extra overtime and things like that. And if they have a trial, they'll they'll give us advance notice so we can schedule everything. You know, it's it's a big court, you know, there are some delays, I would think, in scheduling some cases, but it's nothing that's out of the ordinary, I don't think, for a court of that size. I am a little confused, though, as long as Jeff is. I thought we had court one day a week. I don't know what this 1.5 days twice a month is. I'm a little, that's the first time I'm hearing that. I was under the impression we had court once a week. So I'm not not sure.
Yeah, me too.
I just have a hard time. We have 2,500 cases, I think, was the number roughly speaking for us. Bedminster had 6,000. I think Bernard Township will bring another 10,000. I don't see how that improves our efficiency, given the finite amount of time. We're cramming more cases into the same amount of time. I don't fully understand this plan.
Well, first, there's a question of whether or not the time has been increased by 50% or not.
Yeah.
Clear on that. And just for clarification, I'm looking at the numbers now. It's saying that the three-year running average for Bernard Township is 6,660 cases. The three-year running average for the other three towns combined is 11,158. So if you take 6,660 and divide it by 11,158.
Well, you're increasing it by 50%.
Well, no, you're increasing it by closer to 60%. Hold on. Yeah, it's basically rounds off to about 60% increase in the amount of cases versus our three-year running average for the three other towns. So we should see a 60% increase in the amount of time that the the court's operating, unless there's some efficiency that you can do more cases more quickly. I don't know. And so I'm confused by the question of whether or not currently there's four sessions a month. And they're envisioning going to what effectively is three sessions a month, which is 1.5 full court sessions twice per month. I count that as 1.5 plus 1.5 is three full court sessions. And it sounds like there's other information on this call that says that we could be at four sessions a month if we're operating every Tuesday right now. Do we have any way of clarifying this? The other thing as I read is that that some timing wise, we have to make a decision tonight?
Yes.
Um, let me make a phone call. I already called Lieutenant Remy and he was under the impression we were meeting once a week as well. Let me try and call somebody else. Maybe they maybe they modified that recently and really didn't clarify to us if they had cut back the number of court days from once a week to to twice a month. And, you know, it was really the day. I think it's on Tuesdays. We always had court. So all we get is information on the days that they're docketing our cases. We wouldn't necessarily know if they had court on a Tuesday that we had no cases docketed, docketed, if they didn't meet or not. Let me try to make another call or two while you guys are having this discussion. I'm going to mute up and see if I can get clarification on that. I'm not sure I will be able to. But let me double check, all right?
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it very much.
Ralph, do you think you'd be able to email, wait a minute, the clerk there in Bedminster? Would she answer you if you reached out to her? Because she's pretty much the one that's been communicating to us. And just ask her to clarify the times?
Sure, I will give her.
Judy, is it Judy?
Yes, Judy.
Julie Sullivan.
If you have a phone number, you can give her a call.
Um, on their website, it says Tuesdays is the only four days. Tuesdays at 11:00 on Bedminster Borough website.
Implying every Tuesday at 11:00.
Yeah.
Yes.
So maybe we can get an answer on that. So can we just put that off for now and move on to the membership fees while we try and get an answer on that, the pool membership fees on 2154?
Yeah, so my only question on the pool membership fees, and Gina, I don't know if you have an answer to this. So there are so many unknowns right now. There may be population limits on the pool. What happens? So I get the whole parada thing that makes a whole lot of sense. Has there been any thought to what the pool is going to do if, let's just say that there's the current order stands and you can only have a maximum of 25 folks in the pool at any one time? Have they thought about how that would work and provide some equity there?
Um, there was no talk about equity from that perspective. We did talk about, you know, I think that they looked at all the numbers and they noted that, you know, we never have more than 100 people in the pool area at any given time. So, I mean, obviously, if it's 25, it's a big difference. But but they did look at at the the total numbers. But there was never any talk about, you know, reduction in rates or anything like that for, you know, limited use or or things like that. But definitely, they thought about, you know, if we had to restrict the number of people at any one given time going into the pool area, you know, what would we do? So they definitely are talking about things like that.
In my personal, look, I'm willing to approve this tonight so that they can have a path forward, just with the knowledge that, look, if circumstances change, this would come back with a better solution if the one was needed.
Yeah, Chad, it's it's Ted, if I if I may.
Hey, Ted, how are you?
Good, yeah. So, yeah, so around the capacity points, we had the NJRPA guidance from the last couple of weeks. We've got American Red Cross copies today of their guidance. And we were hoping the governor, you know, the state's kind of been kicking this down the road for the last five or six days, probably because they had they wanted to get that graduation declaration out today, most likely. But, yeah, so in terms of capacity, right, the NJRPA's guidance is, you know, six, you know, the six-foot distancing, you know, social distancing guide, which basically puts a 36-square-foot, you know, bubble around groups of two is the way they is the way they defined it. So that in the NJRPA, it's all about looking at your square footage outside of the pool, outside of the water surface. And then we took that and looked at what was our daily attendance for all of last year. And Saturdays is our highest attended, as you would expect. And it's in 150 to 165 range on any given Saturday during the summer. And that is for the entire day, not for all at one time. So, you know, so then the next thing was trying to figure out when the state puts their guidance. So, you know, so then the next thing was trying to figure out when the state puts their guidance out, we'll just do, simply do the math and figure out, do we have a capacity constraint to publish? Mixed with, will we ever hit that actual constraint? So people don't go crazy or freak out that, you know, there's a, there's a capacity issue. Yeah, and if there is, we have to figure out how to deal with it. So that's, that we're just waiting for the math to get, you know, so we can get the math done. Um, at least that was Neil's, you know, that was Neil and I were talking about it. That was the approach at this point. So we've got, we've got a group of five people on the, on the committee as a pool subcommittee working on it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ted.
And that was helpful. Yeah, it's a real challenge because we didn't, we don't get answers as quickly as we need them, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Um, so are we okay with, uh, approving that resolution?
I am.
Okay, do you want to?
I'm only speaking for myself though.
Um, do you want to move it?
Sure, I, I'll, I'll move it.
We have a second?
On second.
Okay, roll call please.
Anthony, you're on mute.
You're muted.
Muted yourself, Anthony.
I thought you said, I'm sorry, I thought you said, I thought you said John was, was muted. I was the one who was muted there. Mr. Donahue, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
This, this is McCreey?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Mara?
Yes.
Okay, um, nobody came back with answers yet. We're still waiting. Okay, so we'll move on. Um, Public Safety Committee, Christine, you have a report?
Oh, yeah. Um, we met on May 26th and the first item that we discussed was Washington.
Actually, I'm sorry, I said public, did I say public works or public safety?
I said public safety, but I think.
You said safety, but.
Safety, actually, Jeff, I'm sorry.
That's all right. She can go first.
We're talking public works. We met on May 26th.
Good, alright.
Um, we all agreed that we should delay the Washington Corner Road work until the, um, till we complete the roadwork to Hull, Lyndeberry and Lloyd. Um, mainly due to funding, because so much is up in the air with funding that we want to just, um, wait until late summer, early fall to decide if we, you know, we should take on that additional project. We talked about, um, uh, what we voted on, I think already were the funding levels for the New Jersey Department of Transportation 2020 grant requests. So we're hopeful that if we put in grant requests for Chestnut and Crestview, that we can get some of that money from the DOT. So that's in process as of tonight. And, um, we already accepted the grant, uh, we, the grant request forms earlier today, I believe, on our agenda.
Yeah.
We, we talked about the walking paths at the Polo Grounds, so, um, obviously cost is an issue for this as well and, um, our last meeting prior to this one, we gave the green light to get, uh, some different cost options. So we have a couple and they're still a little bit high. So at our next meeting, which is June 16th, we're gonna see if we can work within the constraints of what we approved in 2019, which was in the 60,000 range. So it's basically, you know, we're trying to get, uh, something going for this year, utilizing what's available and not really overspending. And we're hopeful that we can do that. So we should have an update after June 16th.
Christine, uh, what kind of surface are you looking to put down?
Uh, that has a lot to do with it and, um, we are, we talked about, um, a couple of different things. So ideally you want to loop like a full circle.
Right.
However, um, a full circle paved, you know, from what we came up with, depending on the width as well. So if you're talking about eight feet full circle paved, uh, we don't have that in our budget essentially. But if we could do like, uh, six feet, um, U shape, uh, crushed gravel, those are the two extremes. So somewhere in between that is what we're hoping, hoping to get for a good, you know, something that will make sense for our
Right.
residents as well as for our budget.
Right, and you want it handicap accessible too. I mean, that you could
Yes.
Care on it, so, yeah.
And we also talked about, you know, making some parts of it handicap accessible, especially where the parents and grandparents want to go watch their kids play on the turf. So that I think is already handicap accessible. And then we talked about, you know, some areas being steeper than others and maybe we just work within our constraints as far as topography goes, that we don't have to spend a ton of money on a slope when we can just hopefully work around it.
Yeah, and, and excuse me, Mayor, I actually, um, did send you an email about, you know, because these were all recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Right.
Originally, so I had, I, I had sent you an email to inquire about what the initial intention was of the walking path from that Ad-Hoc Committee to see if there was any paperwork or notes from meetings that we might be able to refer back to. Cause we had a lot of kind of back and forth discussion about what we should do. And then I thought, well, why don't we get the original intention from, from the Ad-Hoc Committee?
Can I answer you? I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm sure you have tons of emails, which is why I mentioned it.
For reminding me. Uh, the original intention was from comments about people saying that, um, grandparents and some of the elderly couldn't get to the bleachers or the far fields, you know, because it's uneven ground and it was hard for people if they had a walker or they just, you know, had balance issues. So we wanted to make it easier for people to get out to that field to watch their grandchildren. And then in the discussion, it was, well, if it went all the way around, it could also be an exercise, you know, avenue where people could just go and walk when they, you know, wanted to go somewhere off the roads to walk. Cause we don't really have, other than the track at the high school, there isn't really a a public walking area. Um, but then we were gonna do the, the, the walking path around the pond, but now that got held up as well, so.
Yeah, that's my next item. There's a lot, a lot, you know, a lot of things turning at the same time. And, you know, we haven't given up on this one. Ideally, in a perfect world, we'll have some kind of, uh, path there that's a loop. But we may have to start off smaller and work our way towards that, you know, in the upcoming year or two. And let's also keep in mind that, you know, yes, we have a firm that is now going to be doing an extensive rec plan for us. So we don't, we still think that pursuing this is a worthwhile option for the near term while that plan is going on for the long term. At least, you know, as you mentioned, there's really no other options for a flat, um, protected area to walk. And, you know, arguably the, the, the turf at the high school is the only place, but there's no pets and no strollers and no bikes. So that's really not what we're looking for, I guess, with this option.
And you can, and if there's gym classes out there or school activities.
Or game, yeah. I saw a woman walking her laps in the parking lot the other day at the high school and I felt so bad. Uh, this was the thing that came to mind, so. I know it's only one person, but still, to be walking around in the parking lot just because it's flat and smooth and safe, but it's not really ideal, so.
Yeah.
I think it's worth mentioning for the, uh, for the other council members that weren't at the Public Works Committee meeting. Um, the path around the, the pond is mainly being postponed due to the, uh,
The dam.
Work that's being done on the dam. Until the dam work gets done, it doesn't make sense to build the pathway, which would at least partially need to be torn up, uh, to do completed dam work. So as a result of that, it made sense to, to do the dam work first. And that's in process. And so we just said, we don't, it's not that we don't want to do the path around the, the walkway. It just makes more sense to do the dam work first.
Yeah, so that's my next item, which is the pond walking path. And, uh, after discussing that, we talked about not installing it until the state mandated dam remediation is done, which is, um, September of 2022. So, um, that has to be put on hold unfortunately for a while.
Yeah.
Which allows us to focus on the, um, the other path, which is not so bad.
And that, that, that path, the path over the Polo Grounds was coming from the funding from the, um, open space.
2019, yeah.
Right, that we had that resolution with all the projects in it. Right, okay, thank you. You get more?
I have more, yeah. Well, we already talked about Hull and Lyndeberry, um, that's an 11-week project that's beginning now. The residents have been notified. Um, Lloyd Road is next on our, uh, schedule. Then, um, for White Knack Road, we also have that, uh, for work to begin in August of 2020. Um, we already talked about the change order for the slope, I believe. Stevens Woodland, and there was a change order. I think it was one of our resolutions. That was Resolution 148. So we already, uh, approved that item. It was just, uh, credit, I believe, to us, so. Am I right, Gina and Tom? I think, I'm pretty sure that was, um.
Sorry, Christine, I was making a note about something else. What was the question?
Oh, Stevens Woodland, also known as the slope. There was a change order that we just voted on and that was, um,
I think Stevens Woodland was. I think Stevens Woodland was completed. I think the slope on the agenda is related to, um, White Knack Road slope remediation that we need to do. Is John, uh, on the line?
Uh, hold on, let me get.
I thought I saw Bob Brightley on there.
I did see Bob, yeah, uh, John's not though.
I believe that the slope remediation, I'm, I'm not sure, I think refers to there's a slope along, uh, White Knack Road which needed remediation, but it could be.
That might be the DEP permit.
Okay, and then, so then the. The work was done, but, yeah.
Yeah, so that is pretty much done as of this week or next week. Um, it also in process is the library roof and HBAC, which got slightly delayed because of weather, but, um, it's pretty much done. And, um, that was it for public works.
Uh, Bob Brightley ha- has his hand raised, so I'm gonna unmute him and he can something to say. There you go.
Hi Mayor, yeah, uh, this slope section, that should have been a change order, a deduction in cost of about 42,000 if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And the White Neck Road is the, um, that roadside channel is eroding. So the plan is to, uh, fix that and the borough had received an easement from the property owner. So, uh, we're just waiting for the DEP permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
The only other item was that triangle that the Environmental Commission brought up and we were okay with that too, so.
Great, okay. Um, so did somebody else say something? I'm sorry. Um, Finance Committee?
Kevin Valentine has his hand raised.
Okay, maybe, maybe he's got an answer for us. Okay, Kevin?
I was, yeah, I was waiting there for a minute. I do have an answer. Um, from what I've been able to find out, court has actually been meeting once a week on Tuesdays and they're going to be, be expanding it now once to twice, two days a week. Um, so I, probably they're figuring it's not gonna go a whole day, which may be where we're getting to 1.5 days. I am confused by the part where it was gonna be twice a month though. That's the first I'm hearing of that. But our understanding is it's gonna be two days a week now every week.
Wow, it sounds, it's, I think what that sounds like is they might do one day a week, but twice a month, they'll do one and a half days a week. Twice a month, so basically adding one day per month.
Okay.
Does that sound right, Kevin?
Uh, you know, I made some phone calls and, and, you know, we're not, we haven't really been part of the negotiation, so we haven't really heard exactly what they're planning on doing going forward, but they were meeting once a week. Sounds like.
I think you could, you could read their spreadsheet as it's one day a week, except for twice a month, it's one and a half days.
That is correct. Mayor, if I could jump in.
Go ahead.
I, I did hear back from Judy Sullivan and, and, uh, currently it is Tuesdays, it's 11 to 4 PM on Tuesdays and it, it is most months, four times a month. What they're planning for now is to add, as Tom said, two times a month on Thursdays to go, uh, from, and, and first of all, it was 11, let me go back. It was 11 to 4. They're upping that to nine to four on the Tuesdays. And then on the Thursdays, they're, uh, budgeting to go twice a month from nine to four.
So that's a significant increase then. I mean, that's decent. They added two hours to force eight hours and, uh, to hold. Is there? So, yeah, I think that's.
I mean, I, I would have to assume that all of this is subject to change based on volume, right? I mean, they're, um.
That is, that is correct, Chad. Uh, Judy actually mentioned that very thing, that this is, they're starting out this way. And, um, it could be adjusted.
Alright.
Administrative Office of the Courts makes sure that they move cases along, so, so they can't let them linger for forever and ever.
Thanks, Jack. Okay, so what, can we go back to, um, Resolution 2147? Are you feeling, uh, comfortable with that now?
So I just.
I am.
It looks like if you, if you said they're going to seven hours from five hours and they're adding two seven-hour days, so they're adding 14 hours outright. So they're adding 14 hours there, plus they're adding two hours times the other four days, that's another eight hours. They're adding 22 hours to what was originally 20 hours. They, they doubled capacity.
Yeah, they, they, if I could, if I could just clarify for, for sure. I mean, they, Judy said that they, they could go longer to four o'clock, but they're anticipating it might not be that long, but they're, they're budgeting for that, feeling it out.
Yeah, I guess they won't really know till they see what kind of volume they get, how many hours they really may need.
Right, she did, we did speak. She called me. I texted her and she called me.
Okay.
So, it, they're, I'm sorry, are you gonna say something, Tom?
It, it appears to me that they've added more than 60% of capacity to 60% of an increased workload. It seems as if they've done that, yeah.
Right. But they, they're planning, they believe it will be, the Thursdays will only require maybe ha- half a day, maybe a little more, but they can go longer if it, if it comes out that way.
But they've scheduled for nine to four just in case.
Uh, I think they have, they have that open, but they don't, they're not anticipating that really, but, you know.
Okay, so would someone like to move Resolution 2147?
I'll, I'll move it, Mayor.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call please.
Mrs. Mara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mrs. McCreey?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes, and I want to thank, uh, Councilman O'Day for doing all the math and making it easy for us.
Especially for those brain surgeons.
Sir Donahue?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a brain surgeon?
I was teasing, I was TV teasing the good doctor.
Um, uh, Finance, Tom, you wanna go? And then we'll come back to, uh, Public Safety.
Okay, um, Finance Committee met twice since our last meeting, I believe. Um, or once right before the last meeting and once again since then. Uh, we met for some final revisions. We focused on, uh, assumptions related to, uh, revenue and expenses for our rec programs. Um, the pool, as we talked about a little bit today, uh, as well as the camp programs for the summertime. Those, uh, those, those, uh, revenues and, uh, expenses have largely been eliminated from this version of the, um, budget. So I think if we are thinking about opening the pool for half a year or a third of a year or something, we probably need to think a little bit about that before we introduce. So I think if we are thinking about opening the pool for half a year or a third of a year or something, we probably need to think a little bit about that before we introduce the budget. Um, and as you review the the budget, see, you know, council members, see what they're comfortable with. Um, all the changes that we discussed were reviewed within the Finance Committee and the staff, uh Borough Staff was asked. To summarize that in a one page summary of changes from the prior version that you received from Leslie and Ralph. And then also have the full detail of the budget forwarded to all the other council members. With the request that council members have questions, direct those questions to the Borough Staff for follow up. Um, I I would encourage everybody to try and get all their questions on the table prior to June eighth. Uh, our our plan is to introduce the budget on June eighth. Um, and then we have a a tight deadline for approval, which would then be July thirteenth. Am I saying those dates correctly? It was. June eighth, July thirteenth? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so that would, that would be the plan. Um, so obviously, the sooner that we can discuss any concerns, questions, any changes that anybody has uh prior to June eighth. Would be very uh helpful, and then we can make sure that whatever we introduce on June eighth is uh well flushed out by all the members uh at that time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jeff, public safety, sorry.
I was just writing a note to myself here about the budget. Um, as you can imagine, public safety has been um. Engaged right uh much with the Chief Valentine about the COVID and COVID response, and. Uh, we haven't had a formal Zoom meeting, but we've uh interacted through emails primarily. Um, the uh, I think it's worth noting and um and and to um applaud the police. We've uh based on the latest county figures, we've only had two new cases of COVID in um. In Bernardsville in the last twenty two days, so that's uh less than a case a week. Um, it uh the number is going down countywide and even statewide, but we're going down faster than anywhere else in terms of of the rate of rise. And I think that's in no small measure to the to the um, you know, the good work of uh. Of 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 the people in in the town, by and large, complying with all these difficult restrictions, but also in in the police working with with everybody to do so. Um, we've uh, the the Chief is uh already engaged in um the paperwork necessary for. Some of the grants and reimbursements that'll help us out financially going forward. Um, we've uh uh non-COVID related items, we've been working with uh Ed English and the farmers market. In terms of how to do this um effectively and efficiently and safely, uh and, you know, for example, planning out uh uh. The roots of, you know, patient people traffic. Um, and then uh. Uh, we were working with uh uh Councilman McQueen on his upcoming resolution. We'll discuss later about how to effectively and safely do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, Personnel, that would be Chad.
So we have good news. Uh, we've gone through over the last, what seems like forever. Um, it's been six weeks, Ralph, I think. Gone through a very rigorous um interview process that I believe that everyone's been um at least in the know about. And this evening, um in executive session, we will discuss um the selection of a of a potential candidate to be our new Recreation Director. Uh, just to give a little bit on on the process, um and Ralph, correct me if the numbers are wrong, but I think the spirit and the gist are are about correct. We started with around eighteen to twenty candidates. Um, through a selection process, we narrowed those eighteen to twenty. C V's down to, I wanna say. Around eleven or twelve, that then got narrowed down by Ralph and Anthony to a group of five that went through a very rigorous interview process. Um, leading to a a final grouping, which was interviewed by the uh Mayor and Ted. Um, to come to, I think we had one hundred percent consensus. That that this was the the final candidate to present to the to the group this evening.
Thank you, and thanks for uh, yeah, the going through that whole process. Um. Okay, we did Public Works, uh Land Use Committee, um we did have um. A meeting with the uh Downtown Redevelopment Commission, uh Commission Committee. And finalized the redevelopment plan for sixty five Mars Town Road. Um, I sent that to you earlier in the week. I want to remind you to please read through it thoroughly, and if you have any. Comments, suggestions, or questions, to get them to me by next Tuesday, because we want to introduce that at the June eighth meeting. Um, and then the point i- is if we're all uh. In favor of it, then we follow, the introduction will be to have it go to the Planning Board for them to. Uh, make sure it's consistent with the master plan. Um, so please take the time. It's pretty long, but you know, there's, some of it's very technical, but you can get the the general. Flavor of where the plan is going, and that's um for what was the former Audi dealer. Um, we're also working on the um Quimby Village. Redevelopment Plan and coming up with different scenarios of if it could be done in stages or how the properties can overlap. Um, and we actually, the the Land Use Committee met again with one of the developers who's been adapting his plan. Based on some of the suggestions that we've been hearing at the committee, so um. It's still a viable project, it's moving forward. And I think it's, it's been a very positive experience. Topology, I think, has been doing a great job in incorporating people's comments and being aware of. What our community is looking for, so um anybody, uh Tom or John, want to add to that? We're good?
I I think I think it covered the stuff that we talked about in the meetings.
Yeah, it's been a, I think, pretty productive pro- process so far, and I think uh. It'll yield something, actually, will happen this time, I think.
Yeah.
Are there any interim reports that are gonna be shared with the rest of the council?
Uh, well, you have this, the sixty five Mars Town, that's.
I've talked about Quimby, yes.
Oh, Quimby? No, we don't have anything yet. We haven't, even the uh the Redevelopment Committee has nothing so far. It's just been discussion, and they're. Now working on incorporating the discussion into some kind of draft. So when we get that, we can share that.
Well, okay, but will will other council members be interviewed by Topology or that the Development Group?
Interviewed?
Or discussed? I mean, do we have input to that process?
Yes, uh like, just like you have now, you've got the draft, so now's your chance to comment on it. And you'll get the draft for Quimby, and then it's, because we get to comment last, after it's kind of, you know, in the. Brushed up stages.
Um, Jeff, were you asking kind of like what I brought up, I think, in the last meeting as well, like how the budget, we get. The opportunity to talk a little bit more to kind of understand, because it's much easier to talk about it than read. Everything.
Ye- yes and no. Actually, I was thinking about it not so so much in a budgetary, but in a schematic, kind of a strategic way to think about it, but the. We're being asked to comment when it's pretty much fleshed out at the at the end of the process, rather than uh weighing in during the process.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that's, that's the point of a com- of committees, is they they kind of do the weeds work and then come to you with something to clean it up, you know, and tweak it.
I understand that, and I understand we're also constrained by, you know, some of the the state. Rules that that would don't allow us to all be in the same room at the same time often, but I also thought there was gonna be. Um, subcommittees uh formed so that uh all of us had some sort of role in the planning of the Quimby Village.
Um, that wasn't my understanding, but.
Well, we did, we did talk about having subcommittees. I I think that's something that we did, we did discuss at the outset.
Yeah, but it wasn't what uh Jeff's talking about. It was subcommittees of that committee.
I think what uh Jeff was saying was, in the absence of the subcommittees that we previously discussed, is there another way that methodology, or is there a process point? At which we could engage some of the other council members who are all quite interested in this topic that's uh of major concern to all of our constituents? And can I have input, you know, other than, you know, near the end of the process? May- maybe there's a, maybe there's a way for us to do an interim check in the full council, uh, you know, I I don't know. But I'm just saying. If one, if one methodology was to have subcommittees, which we aren't doing, if we aren't gonna do that, is there another way?
Yeah.
I think the draft isn't a fait accompli. I think, you know, we've got a lot of, I think, what we've gotten through, a lot of you would probably agree with, but, you know, the draft is just add a draft, and that's when it goes out for the feedback. You know, to see, you know, where your your heads are at, your thought process is, and it gets still, you know, open for editing, so to speak.
Well, we can actually, I mean, I can ask Topology if there's an interim place at which they can come. Uh, meet with. The other council members or smaller groups to just go over what their thought process is, I mean, how they're putting this together. Um, because they've given us a couple of little, you know, uh PowerPoint presentation, so we can certainly share that when they start working on it. They usually come back with, here's what we were thinking, you know, and so I can certainly share that and see if they want to meet um with smaller groups, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what I was referring to about the smaller groups with the, and the reference to the budget, Jeff, is that, you know, like, we were able to go in and meet in groups of two and three. Smaller so that we were in compliance, and so, yeah, I thought that was uh, that would be great. I mean, I certainly would be.
Yes, uh, I I would like that as well, and I think, quite frankly, you know. It it engaged everybody on the council, you know, we get different ideas, different perspectives, different questions, it makes them think harder. Um, it it it's not a negative, it's a positive.
Yeah, oh, believe me, they get plenty of questions and comments, but yes, no, I agree. Well, I will talk to them and see how we can work that out.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be great. I mean, you know, I don't think it needs to be a uh, you know, a major holdup in the process. Maybe it's just a. A data point, a gateway that we go through, and we say, you know, we're we're halfway towards whatever, let's just bring the rest of the council up to speed with. What we've done so far, where we're going in the next two weeks, that type of thing.
Hmm.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, um. Jeff, I saw you, Jeff Price, you have a a report for us? Can we unmute you?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Okay.
Well, a- as you know, we've been um. Restricted in what kind of inspections we've been able to do. So you haven't got a rental housing report this this month or last month. Um, we're still uh doing zoning enforcement. We're still reviewing um zoning permits. And we're still signing off on construction permits and getting C O's to people. So we're doing the best we can in this current situation, but um. You have no uh housing report this time.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have questions for Jeff?
Am I correct, and maybe I'm not correct in my understanding, that groups of ten or less that practice social distancing, we're gonna be allowed indoors? Is that what the direct, the direction of the state was?
I think that's only for certain events, like a wedding, a funeral, not just for socializing.
I see. Okay, well, I didn't know if there was a guideline from the state which said, okay, you know, if you're socially distant, you can go through and do an inspection, you stay six feet away from the homeowners or whatever. Like, if that, if that comes to pass and that becomes an approved approach. And I think we also talked, Jeff, about um doing virtual inspections as well?
Yes, yes, we have formulated a plan to do that. And our current target is to begin that on June the first with a select landlord in two or three of his um his places. So basically, it's a FaceTime with two tablets. Our inspector stays in the vehicle. He hands the tablet over, or the tablet is handed over to the landlord or the tenant. Uh, they will go through the house. And uh we will instruct them on where to look, what to to view. And uh complete the inspection that way. Our inspector then will uh get out the car and go and do the external inspection. Gutters, windows, grass, hedges. And uh that will complete the inspection. We'll take the tablet from the um, from the landlord. We will uh clean it, cleanse it, and uh move to the next one.
And that's. So that's, you said it's a trial basis on June first, and then is there a plan then to evaluate whether or not it was successful?
Uh, yes, uh, we're pretty confident it'll be successful. It's just a question of lining up the landlords or the tenants to do this. And uh, that's what we're, we're trying to do, and as soon as we start coming back to work. Uh, on a full-time basis, you know, that will free up more days to do this kind of work, and whether that's in a week or two weeks. You know, we'll be prepared for that.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, any other questions for Jeff? Okay, um, council liaison reports, I'm not sure if anybody's been meeting, I know uh. Uh, Gina, you met with Board of Health, right? I heard this.
Uh, yes, actually, Board of Health and Rec have um have been meeting quite a bit.
Okay.
Um, Board of Health, the, most of the talk from um Baskin Ridge, who runs our Bernard Township, who. Uh, runs our Board of Health, they were waiting on full guidance and camps that was supposed to come out last week, but it didn't come yet. Um, so we're still patiently waiting that. Um, and then uh also. Um, they were talking about the work that they've been doing with the farmers market for signage and how they go in, how people will go in and out. Um, they've been in touch with the schools, talking about alternate measures that they might need to take even come September, so they're already starting to work on that. Um, they were talking also about library curbside pickup, that the requests have been coming in, and that might be um able to be opened soon. Um. And uh. We, we also discussed attendance of the policy, and Ralph, you might have been reached out uh by Len. To talk about how we enforce or um understand the rules of people who need to attend the different committees and how often they need to attend, and. Um, if they haven't attended, you know, what can we do to um potentially remove them from the committee so that they can be replaced by somebody. Um, who's willing to participate and show up in these meetings. Um, so Len was going to follow up with Ralph on that. Um, and then as far as the rec committee, again, I think I just want to say a special thank you to Neil. Um, our acting director who um organized a a great video for Memorial Day. Um, it was really, it was really great. Some, you know, people from the town sent in their pictures and things, and he did a great job putting that together, and also the recording of the the live event. Which was a much smaller gathering, but at least he was able to record it and get it out to everybody, so um thank you so much, Neil, for that. Um, the tennis courts were open today as well with guidance, and I think um. Dr. Hammond was able to post that on most of the local social media pages um for people to uh be aware. And then, again, in conjunction with Board of Health, they're still waiting on the guidance and the pools and camps. Um, but we are planning to open if it's allowed by the state. So we do need um four to six weeks for the opening of the pool, so we hope that we'll get um enough notice from the governor so that we can open registration and open the pool. With that four weeks to six weeks' notice and um and have things up and running for people once we're able to.
Okay, thank you.
Gina and Jeff, do you know, because I had a busy day today at work, did the new signs get printed in Anthony? Did they get printed and up for?
Yep, they were up before nine thirty. The, so the tennis courts were up before nine thirty this morning, I know that.
How about the cages? Did the cages go up as well, Jeff? Do you know? I didn't have a chance to follow up on them today.
The, those signs, we're we're done late afternoon, so they should be up tomorrow. We're gonna call and and uh. Go down there and and have them up tomorrow.
Thank you, Anthony.
Uh, had, did anyone else have um readings?
Yeah, so uh we met with the Planning Board. Um. Primary mission was again going through the new zoning overlay for the downtown project. And I know that this was discussed a little bit by Dr. Hammond. This whole downtown project is gonna require quite a bit of working discussion between the council, so right now the Planning Board is deliberating. And I imagine a lot of the same deliberations that they have are ones that we're going to have once this gets through their committee. Things such as, you know, look, our um two versus three story buildings, what is the intention of the downtown? Um, Common Ground Group versus what do we want to um ultimately approve here in this town? So there's a lot of those types of discussions that we'll have to have. Um. We have another meeting this Thursday. The Planning Board, frankly, has been moving at a relatively slow pace. So I I'm not a hundred percent confident it'll be done and it's worked this week. Um, but I will push if it is not to make sure that they are done in their work uh by their next meeting.
Are there significant changes to the Common Ground, or is it?
Uh, there are fundamental changes to the Common Ground that the Planning Board is recommending.
And have you had, um, I forget his name, the guy from Con Tim, no?
So Keith, so one of the things that after the last meeting, listening to what was going on, I recommended that Keith from Common Ground be present at the last two meetings. Um, we got a bit approved through Ralph, and it's going, it's gonna be one of those external uni- resources, so he can um attend the next two Planning Board meetings to help. Explain the rationale. So he can, um, attend the next two planning board meetings to help explain the rationale to the planning board, why certain things are recommended and certain things weren't.
Good, yeah, I think that'll be helpful, thank you. Um, anyone else?
Yeah, the, uh, library board has been meeting, um, pretty frequently to, uh, plan out a reopening when the governor gives their blessing, his blessing. We actually have been attracting new members, uh, to the library about 10 to 20 a month, even with, uh, COVID. Uh, and they've been doing a pretty brisk, uh, business, if you will, on audiobooks and ebooks. Um, so we've kept the library, um, front and center as best we can, given it, uh, remote and digital means. Uh, but we do have a, a subcommittee that's, um, mapped out a phased reopening. Once the, um, uh, the word is, is approved. Uh, somebody had mentioned, um, a, a curbside book drop. So we're, we're planning that out. We have several thousand books that we have to actually, that are out in people's hands that we, we need to get returned. Uh, and then we have a, a plan for, uh, you know, how, how we would quarantine the books and clean them and et cetera. So, um, uh, the library director has done a great job in, in orchestrating this plan. We're just waiting for the approvals.
Great, thank you. Hopefully that'll be, I think that may be the next thing to come will be library curbside, but that would be great. Um, okay, anyone else have committee meetings?
There, there was a housing committee meeting, Chad.
Chad?
Oh, that's right, sorry. Jeff, you did your thing, so I didn't add to a lot to what you had previously done. Um, so at the housing, housing committee, a lot of the discussion was, uh, to the approval and revision of what Jeff was describing, which is the virtual, um, rental and inspection process that he just mentioned. And again, you know, compliment Jeff and the team. Everything now in this environment needs to be reinvented. And, um, continuing inspections during this time was important. So Jeff, thanks, I guess officially, even though I gave it to you unofficially at the meeting, for rethinking the way that, that that can get done and that piece of business, which is important to our town. Um, the other thing which is moving forward and Jeff, I, I can't remember if it was going to, it'd probably be on the agenda in two weeks. It's just a rewrite of, um,
The property maintenance.
Of the property maintenance ordinance, um, to simplify it and combine it. Um, so in principle, it doesn't change a whole lot of, um, items, very similar to the, what Christine was bringing up for the mor- uh, moratorium on the roads. However, it updates the language, it makes it clearer, and it has an eye towards enforcement. Um, one of the biggest changes that, that we had in this, um, revision is a, uh, increase in, um, the fee required. Uh, which will be transparent when you guys see this next week or in two weeks. So that'll come through and, um, and that was pretty much that from that meeting.
Well, yeah, and we, we did talk about trying to increase the minimum fines from 100 to 500. I asked Jack to weigh in on that and maybe he wants to do the same now.
Jack?
Once again, the state stands in our way.
How significantly, Jack?
The, the state statute provides that the maximum minimum fine can be $100. Now, the only recourse we have is that every day can be considered a separate violation. Uh, but we can't set the minimum fine at anything higher than $100.
So Jack, so when, when we were deliberating on this point, so whenever there's a summons that's issued, um, so I understand they can't be punitive. I, I fully understand that, that legal fact. However, there's a lot of time and effort that's gone into through multiple issues of warnings. Um, once we finally get to a summons, it's a circumstance where there's been tens, if not hundreds of hours expended on a single property. Um, how do we effectively do the same thing and recoup the time and effort without being punitive?
I, I think we need to structure the fees so that if there are multiple inspections required, it costs more every time that Jeff and his people have to go back out to the site.
I don't, I don't understand, uh, Jack, if, if you're talking about the maximum minimum, uh, that's, that's essentially, that's the minimum you can charge, but you can charge. What we were talking about was increasing the, um, the, the maximum, not the minimum.
The, the maximum could be $2,000, which is also set by state law.
Right.
So it sounded to me like Jeff was talking about increasing the minimum.
The minimum.
$100.
Yes, that's what, that's exactly what we were looking to do.
And that cannot be increased beyond $100. But as I say, the, the best weapon we have to overcome that is to issue summons on a daily basis. And then it's up to the municipal court judge. Municipal court judge can impose a fine greater than the minimum, obviously.
So as a standard, so i- if, if, look, so what, what our goal was in this is to be fair and equitable here. So if we're going to a circumstance where Jeff is warned a property owner over the course of months, typically it's, you know, three, four, six months, Jeff, right? Um, and we've gone to the summonses, is it possible to issue a, a single summons that has five days worth of tickets in it? And sort of decrease the decrease the paperwork that's required by Jeff and Renee?
Uh, well, there's, there's only one single line item for a date.
Right.
Also, my, my understanding, Jack's point about just issuing a summons every day, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, Jeff Price, but, uh, um, the, so part of our experience has been if we came in there with 10 or 12 summonses, uh, one after another daily, the judge would potentially lump them all together and, and, uh, or throw some of them out. And we end up with, uh, no more than we would have had if we just gave them one summons.
Right, correct. It's, it's a very tedious job to write those tickets every day and take them over to Bedminster and keep a track of what you're doing. And at the end of the day, the courts will, will consolidate that whole, uh, clump of tickets into one.
So I, I guess we'll have to take this back to committee. Jack, if you can brainstorm in the spirit of what I think we intend to do and see if there's a, a path forward. There may very well not be, but if you can put your, your really smart brain to that brainstorm, that would help us.
Yeah, thanks. I, I think our best hope is to have a graduated fee schedule for each reinspection. That, that's basically all we can do.
We already have that, don't we?
Yeah, I, maybe we can raise the fees, you know?
So it's, so we can increase the fees on the reinspection if they, if they fail an initial inspection.
Right, we can't make them punitive, as somebody said earlier, but
Yeah.
It requires a lot more manpower to keep going back out there.
Yeah, I agree. So may, maybe that's the remedy, because I know, I know the ones that we're talking about typically have, what? Four, six, eight reinspections? Jeff?
Well, um, most of our court duties are for zoning enforcement issues, not really housing inspections. I mean, we go out and do an initial inspection, it fails, we go out again. And chances are that 80, 90% of them have, uh, have checked out okay. What we really deal with, with the courts are, are zoning enforcement issues. And, uh, that's where it gets the minimum fine of, uh, 100 or the maximum for a day is 2,000, which, which the judge and the prosecutor set themselves.
So let me ask, uh, I, I was part of this, the last committee meeting, because I, I transitioned off of housing and zoning, but I had been involved in this discussion last year even. Um, if we went to a graduated reinspection fee schedule, Jack, is there a, since I'm, I'm learning that there are state rules for everything.
Yes.
Does the state mandate, um, any length of time that has to take place between inspections? Before you go up in the, before you go up on the, on the fee?
In fact, housing, unlike zoning, is almost all local. It's local ordinances and local regulations. So we're not bound by the MLUL or the Construction Uniform Construction Code, like we are in the area of building.
So if we were to, if we were to build into our, that the first inspection failure is $100. And the second one, it becomes $250 and the third one is $500. And you're given two weeks between them. And, you know, we give you two weeks to remedy it. Would that all be kosher?
We, we can't cross the line into it being punitive, but yes, we can certainly have a graduated fee schedule.
And it all depends on what the violation is. If it's batteries in a smoke detector. If it, if it's, uh, mildew in the bathroom. Or if it's a, a leaking sewer line or, or something that would take some time and have to hire, so, uh, a professional, get pil- permits to get it fixed. No, you, you can't just put a two-week timeframe on things. You have to be realistic in the actual work that's going to have to happen to fix the problem.
Well, they, they, yes, and I, I understand that they may not have accomplished the full fix, but at least they would show a good faith effort that they've started. They've retained the experts or they've retained the, the contractors necessary to do the work as an example.
Yeah, I, I, I think, Jeff, I think we're going to have to deliberate on this more. Because if, if I think of, you know, what Jeff was saying and J- his, his point was correct. It, w- once he gets to a point of summonses, I, I think you said that's a point of no return. We tried everything that we can. That's a different circumstance than a battery and a smoke detector. So I, I think we've got to figure out, I think we just need to deliver on the, deliberate on this more.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Chad, we're up to you, I believe.
Sure. Um, do we have?
Actually up to version 1.03, right?
Yes.
Yes, and everybody, I, I know everybody has 1.03. And since the public is, is listening, maybe I'll start with just a couple of really brief statements if I could. So the first and the most important, and I can't stress this enough, um, that whatever, i- if we pass this resolution this evening, um, for out, to ease outdoor dining and, um, commerce restrictions, it does not in any way, um, invalidate any order by our governor. Um, or throughout the, the, the infrastructure of, of the police in the state. Um, you know, we're obviously, everyone's aware that we're operating in a state of emergency. And, and essentially he calls the shots. Uh, but starting three, what, almost three meetings ago, we talked about how do we reopen as a town? Um, and how do we do it responsibly within the context of the law and be prepared? And, and really what is in front of everyone this evening is the, um, culmination of, of many weeks of thought. And, and really the, the driving principle in this was, um, as we see the governor changing policy daily, um, it's really been daily for the last week. How do we make a, a change in our local policies? So that way our local policies don't get in the way of allowing our businesses and our, our restaurants to emerge on the other side of this and, um, start to reemerge into this new normal, however it ultimately gets defined. Um, in spirit, the idea is to make the environment as pro-business and pro-restaurant as possible. Um, but also while maintaining safety, uh, within social distancing and all of the things that everyone is, is now becoming part of our, our new vernacular. Um, in general, this, a resolution does two things. Um, like I mentioned, it e- eases restrictions on the number of days of sidewalk sales and essentially allows sidewalk sales to be conducted in our borough, um, within three feet of the curb. Um, it also eases the enforcement of outdoor dining. And both of those things become possible with consultation of our zoning officer Jeff, who was just, um, just speaking about various things and also the chief, who everyone is very, uh, ver- very well knows. Now, this does not solve a lot of the outstanding questions and, and, uh, problems that, that we're going to face. However, it starts to ease, um, allows us to get there. And I fully anticipate that we may need something like a task force to, to further continue this conversation and within the context of what this is doing, hopefully tonight, uh, allow to provide some additional framework to make this possible. So, uh, maybe I'll end then there, Mayor, I know there are lots of questions.
Um, just from what, um, you shared and what we shared with some of the business owners we talked to this afternoon, um, they were all very much in favor of this. Um, and Jeff and I had a conversation, uh, Jeff Price, about how, you know, we kind of traveled up 202 and how some of the outside dining would work. And, um, you know, I think it's very doable and it's something positive. Um, and what we talked about was getting the public outside.
Yes.
Um, having that sense of people, like, you know, it's, it's almost like a ghost town now. And I think the idea of people can be outside, even if, you know, they're sitting and eating, they're waiting to get into a store because they're sitting on a bench outside the store because they don't, you know, there's only so many people allowed in and get that sense of community back, even though you're distancing.
Yes.
I think that's where we're trying to go with this, because, you know, and we said, it's not going to be, it's never going to be the same. We're not going to go back to what we had. So we have to find ways to recreate, you know, a sense of a, of a commercial district of commerce and activity downtown. So, you know, it's, we're not going to go right back to how we were. And I think this is a great start to let everyone know that we're, we're trying to help. You know, we're trying to do what we can, uh, what the municipality is allowed to do, um, when we get the, the signal. You know, we're ready to go, everything's in place.
Yes, and, and Mayor, i- if I may, um, you know, each restaurant has its own situation, where it is located, whether it has a big sidewalk in front of it, whether it has a parking lot at the side, or whether it has none of those things. So, you know, the, the first one out of the box here is going to be the, the coffee shop. I think you all got a copy of, of what the coffee shop are planning to do. And really, I think that's beginning the framework of how we can deal with that, this as a group. I know you mentioned the chief and myself. I think the Board of Health has to be involved. I think Glenn Miller has to be involved. And as a, as a group, we all need to sign off on a plan that works and is safe. And, uh, you know, the turnaround could be days, three or four days. But I think it's, um, something that this property owner or the restaurateur has to do. He has to think about how he wants to lay out his outside, outdoor dining. He needs to do the social distancing and the amount of chairs and think it through. Put it on a piece of paper as a, as a sketch for us. And we can go through and, and review it. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, how much are we sticking our neck out approving something like this? What if something goes wrong?
Well, I think one of the things, uh, I had a conversation with Andy from the coffee shop and he has done his whole application for the Board of Adjustment. And, you know, following all the guidelines with whatever the, the fourth feet and measuring everything. And he's got his, um, handrails or whatever, you know, he's, uh, whatever's required, a barrier that he needs to put in and but the, uh, the Board of Adjustment told him it would be at least two months before they would even hear his application. And by then his season is already over, you know, for eating outside just about. So what this would do would help him be able to do that now because he's met everything that's in the ordinance. It's just that he can't get the official appointment and sign off from the Board of Adjustment. Um, and so, you know, if you're using the standards that are in the ordinance of how many feet it has to be, there has to be a, some kind of a railing, sectioning off the eating area. I think it's, it's doable for him, anyway. Um, some of them can't. Now, I could talk, I talked to Alan at Sete and he's rethinking his whole business plan. And probably what he will do is not open for, as a restaurant again, but be a, uh, a, a market, a gourmet food market and catering and takeout. Because he just can't social distance in the tiny space he has. Um, and he's okay with that. It's just, you know, and I think that's what we're encouraging is people to rethink their, their business model and be innovative in how we can do that.
So, so one of the things that we had discussed, and, and this isn't specifically relation, in relation to, to the ordinance itself, it's more to implementation of how we can make this happen in our town. Uh, it may be possible, for example, um, to have a small bank of tables exist in the north portion of the train station parking lot. Um, not for service, not to be operated by any restaurant, but basically to be there as a picnic area when the time allows. So that way on a Saturday, if someone's enjoying the farmer's market, they can get their takeout food from the station or from, from Sete and take their food over to a table, sit with their family and enjoy it. Now, there's going to be a lot of things that need further discussion before something like that's possible. Um, but those are the kinds of ideas that I think we can find a way to implement.
So I had some conversation earlier with Chad, who was explaining what was the purpose of the resolution. And I think I've heard somewhat differing interpretations. So let me just see if I can clarify my understanding, um, and maybe get a better insight into the conversation. My understanding was that the resolution that we are considering, the draft 1.03 that we're looking at right now, was to essentially say that we are not going to put from now until the end of the year so that all of our businesses have a, have a set timeframe. We're not going to enforce our outdoor dining regulations or any of these criteria to the extent that any To the extent that any of them are more stringent than what the state puts forward on a rolling basis. So to that sense, I mean, I don't think we're telling them what they should do. We're saying that we're not providing any restrictions beyond what the state says the restrictions are. And so if the state says six feet, then we say six feet. If the state says 50% capacity, then we say 50% capacity. If the state changes the next week and says 75% capacity is acceptable, then we do that too. So, and we do that from now to the end of the year. So that the, you know, if the state, you know, basically says we're in phase three. You know, the businesses can still plan for an eight month period from now until the end of the year. Isn't that what we're trying to do with this resolution?
Yes, in very many ways. Jack, do you have an official comment to that? I think that all the points that Tom just made are very clearly addressed here.
Yeah, the intent of this resolution is that the borough will not enforce the zoning ordinance. And some of the site plan conditions for various businesses from now through the end of the year. In order to allow those businesses to conduct their trade outside in accordance with the governor's executive orders. It's an attempt to help them when they can't utilize the interior of their businesses. And it's really only those things we have control over. We can't override state law. We can't override executive orders. And it's intentionally open-ended because a lot of it's gonna be in its implementation, the details. Because as Chad, I think, said, every business is different, or maybe it's Jeff. Every restaurant is different. All gonna have to be treated differently.
But to the extent that we're saying we used to have a requirement that there's two feet from this area or four feet from that other thing. Those, we're saying we're not gonna enforce those. We're going to go with whatever the state says. Isn't that what we're saying?
That's right. And every site plan for a restaurant that has outdoor seating, it's shown on the site plan. And what we're saying is you can expand beyond that area shown on your site plan. And with sidewalk trade. And as Chad said, the sidewalk sale ordinance allows you to have nine sidewalk sales a year. And what this resolution says is we're not putting any limit on the number of sidewalk sales that you can have between now and the end of the year. But all the standards of the sidewalk sale ordinance are still in effect.
Well, so Tom, there's a-
Safety and pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic.
Yeah, there's a really important point that the chief, actually, the chief made many. And I don't know if the chief started to participate in the conversation, but he brought up some ADA issues. And one of the biggest pieces of information that we need to make sure that we're, that we do follow in this is a 30, I think it's 36 inches. Of passages required for ADA maintenance of sidewalks. So most of our sidewalks are most, are greater than the 36 inches. But at a bare minimum, we need to maintain that 36 inches on a sidewalk.
Our present sidewalk sale ordinance requires 48 inches. And that remains intact under this resolution as it's presently written.
Well, now I'm confused because I thought the purpose of this ordinance then would be to relax that 48 inches.
No, it's not to relax the 48 inches, because again, that's an outside standard, the ADA. But what we're saying with respect to sidewalk sales or sidewalk dining is you still have to maintain the 48 inches. But ordinarily, you can only have nine sidewalk sales a year. So now you could have, how many days are left?
I thought the 48 inches is stricter than the ADA. I thought the ADA was less than that.
It's 36, it recommends 48. We have to maintain enough room for wheelchairs to-
For wheelchair, yes, I got that.
So 36 is the minimum, but if we can do 48, I think we're better off.
Well, then if we have to stick to those standards, we're not really doing much.
Well, I think we're doing a lot because we're allowing, as I said, we're allowing, first of all, dining there, which is not permitted on sidewalks. As long as you allow for safe passage. We're also allowing sidewalk sales on a limited basis. We're also allowing dining in parking lots. You know, or other areas of the restaurant, maybe a lawn or whatever. It's not shown on the site plan.
Okay. But I do think that this raises the issue that, and I had expressed actually by email when we were looking at the drafts, is that rather than have any one individual make these decisions, because somebody has to be familiar with all the regulations, state and federal. It ought to be a collaborative, I guess, application for want of a better word. That would involve both the police chief, the zoning officer, the fire chief and the health officer.
I assume I have no objection to that.
Yeah, Jeff, I think it probably isn't a bad idea, just as an idea. I thought about this after our conversation, to have a small task force to not only think about the approval of this stuff, but also to think about how we implement it from a community perspective. And those task forces could be charged with both issues, both the, you know, the reviewing of them. And obviously, I'm saying this, you know, I'm willing to volunteer my time for something like this. But also for the application of it and how we try to do what we can to expand commerce in this borough.
We may have to amend this resolution every meeting, because all this is brand new territory. Never done it before. Hopefully, we'll never have to do it again.
I think in terms of giving permission, you know, when somebody has to sign off, it should be, like, you know, Glenn Miller, Chief Valentine. Jeff Price, you know, those are the people that know the safety issues. They know the fire code. They know that. You know, so if there's a form to fill out and those three people review it, I think that would be the collaboration on getting it approved.
Well, I think, again, but the resolution, as we've currently been given, it doesn't really have that kind of collaborative approach. One paragraph says the chief will do this, another paragraph said the zoning officer does something. So I think we need just to amend that document to reflect that collaboration. And I do think if we're dealing with outdoor dining and food related items, at least specifically for that context, the health officer needs to be involved.
Well, they certainly, Lucy did send an email late today, I saw. And I don't know that she needs to be involved in the approval of the relaxation of enforcement. But certainly, any restaurant or other food vendor has to comply with all the health department regulations and get any required permits. But I'm not sure Lucy wants to be part of the decision-making process per se. Just to the same extent she is now, if someone has a restaurant, you know, they have to get all the permits from the health department. So that would certainly remain in effect. That's one of the things that we can't override and we wouldn't want to.
So Jack, to add in, because I know that in, if I can find the paragraph, it does say that with the permission of the borough zoning officer in consultation with the police chief. Could we change that? And is this appropriate, permission of the borough zoning officer in consultation with the police chief and the fire chief?
We could actually change it too, as Jeff suggested, that approval by all three of them. You know, how they deal with that is up to them.
Chief, are you okay with having an official role in the approval process?
Oh yeah, I'm fine with it. I've talked to Jeff today offline. I talked to Lucy. I also talked briefly with Glenn, and I think we're all in agreement that this has to be collaborative. And that's the, you know, we're gonna get the most bang for our buck there and make this as safe as possible.
Great.
You know, take in consideration for everybody. The only thing I do, it's a little bit different. I want to talk about, you know, liability here. Normally, these applications go through a rigorous process. Where they're screened, whether it be through the board of adjustment or the planning board. You know, there's some formal type of permit or approvals that are granted. And we're doing this under an emergent basis. You know, we're kind of going out in the field. We're kind of giving a battlefield blessing to, you know, what these businesses want to do. And in an effort to help them along and get them going and get them started again. In doing so, you know, we're assuming responsibility that this is good to go and that it's safe. Even though we're doing it in good faith to the best of our ability, it's not being vetted to the same extent that it might be if they had to go before the planning board or the zoning, you know, board for some kind of official approval. So my concern has to do with the indemnification clause. And I think some of the other people, I won't put words in people's mouths, but I think we're all somewhat concerned about that. That if we approve these non-traditional uses of parking lots and pedestrian areas. And something does happen or something does go wrong, that individually, you know, someone could look at us and say, hey, you should have known better. And we're on the hook for punitive damages in a lawsuit. The indemnification ordinance that we have says that council may indemnify. It doesn't say that you will. And in my experience in the past, it's been that that decision has not been made until after something happens. And, you know, I would be much more comfortable knowing that if we were going forward and doing this. That we would have the protection and the backing of the council. That in the event we were individually named in the performance of our duties, I'm not talking about any malicious acts or any intentional wrongdoing here. That we would be protected from, you know, punitive and other damages that may be personally assessed on us for any role that we have in approving these conditions to exist.
Jack, do you have an opinion on that before I offer mine?
I think we could certainly add a provision. The chief is right. The indemnity and hold harmless provision in the Borough Code, which is the exact language of the state statute, does say may. So certainly, we could add a provision here saying that the, those three officials would be indemnified and defended. You know, unless, and there are the three exceptions. I think it's intentional, you know, toward criminal conduct, something like that. So you could certainly make that representation ahead of time, that they will be covered under that section of the Borough Code.
I was going to recommend that that was, if that was possible, that that was what we would do. You know, like the chief says, these are unusual emergent times. And I think you used the word battlefield, which is very interesting. And I think quite appropriate. I think using the word emergent in this resolution and indemnifying is the right thing to do, personally. But that's just my one of six opinions.
Can we also ask the business owners that if they're asking for the permission to do this, that, you know, the business owners themselves, that I don't know, indemnifies the right word, but they recognize that they're requesting this. And I think we shouldn't be saying this is an approved way to do this. We should be saying that when you put together as a plan that meets the state requirements. Like, we're not saying this is a good idea. We're just saying it doesn't violate the state guidelines.
I think that's true of any permit or approval that the borough gives. And in general, the Torque Claims Act says that the borough is not responsible with either granting or denying a permit. So I don't think we're gonna ask the business owners to indemnize, but I think certainly the borough can make that representation to the officials who are making the decisions.
But in our signing off of any of these applications, can we say this application meets the guidelines as set forth by the state or something? Our understanding of the guidelines as set forth by the state? Instead of saying this is an approved use?
We really can't approve things that would be contrary to state law. We'd like the planning board saying you've gotta get, you know, DOT approval for a curb cut. Or you've gotta get county planning board approval. You know, we're not saying that you can violate those things. So it'd be up to them, to some extent, to make sure they're not violating any other statute or rule or regulation.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else that we need to do, then that's fine. I don't mind changing it to will indemnify or would indemnify our staff.
So far, there are two changes. One is wherever it says the decision is made by one of the officials. It would require the approval of the police chief, the fire chief and the zoning officer. Also, we would make the representation ahead of time that the indemnity and hold harmless provision in the Borough Code would apply in this situation and those officials would be entitled to those protections.
I think it's, yes.
Jack, just a question. So in relation to food establishments, you know, obviously, we had some discussion that the health department regulations kick in here. Should they be part of this process? Or should they at least be recognized as having some type of collaborative authority here? I know they do have separate authority, but I don't want, I want to do this as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. I don't want to have to go through this process with the police, the fire, code enforcement. And, you know, then say, okay, now you have to go to health. But I think health should be in on this from the beginning.
But I don't think, I don't want to be in on the decision-making. And it's the same as if the planning board gives approval to a restaurant, the restaurant can't open unless it gets board of health approval.
Well, we're going through all these, all these steps and all these motions to approve something that at the end, the health department might say, you can't do that.
Well, that's true in the case of a planning board approval.
Can we, so chief, because I'm here, so I'm hearing the issues, your issues, clearly, we don't want to do all this work. And then have the department of health get them, so can we get some general principles from them? And some do's and don'ts, not to use steel from the sign, that we could apply in the thought process?
Lucy was very supportive of doing this collaboratively today when I spoke with her. So they don't have any objections to being involved with this. You know, I'd like them to see if we do get a request in for a location, that, you know, we bring them on board right away. And, you know, whether it be informally that they're okay with this, they could share any concerns that they have. You know, I just think they're a real important part of this when it comes to the food establishments and that we don't want to do all kinds of work and get the owner's hopes up, that this is gonna be good, the town's gonna approve this. And because we're not maybe familiar with something in the food services industry, some reason as to why this can't occur. So I think they need to be in this at the ground level. You know, but our actions don't depend, don't dictate their actions, but we need to work-
I agree with you, but I think the three of you should just immediately contact Lucy. As I say, she's not in the decision-making, she's not gonna want to make decisions whether they should be permitted or not, just whether they're entitled to permits. I think you should get her involved at the outset, but I don't think the resolution needs to-
Can we just change the language that those three are approving in collaboration with the health department?
We can change it in consultation with the-
Okay. She's not making a decision, she's just consulting.
On our decision, and then she has to make her independent decision. Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to-
But that way she knows, you know, what it is that's in front of you right from the beginning.
But she is very supportive. You can tell from her email what she said.
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, I think we're all very supportive of this. They put the extra effort forward to make this happen. You know, when I look at the areas where this might be most beneficial, and I'm just gonna throw this out there. There are definitely going to be some businesses where this is going to be a lot easier to facilitate than others. You know, anything that's along 202 could be problematic because of the condition of the sidewalk or the width of the sidewalk with pedestrian access. The state DOT right away will have to be considered. But there's other areas that to me, I mean, just come out almost automatically. There's parking lots that are on private property where some of these restaurants can expand their outdoor dining. They may be able to expand into a neighboring property or a neighbor's parking lot who's using their parking lot in the evening. And set up tables, you know, immediately adjacent to their business. You know, I think a Plaza Teckel and the sushi business, they have a parking lot behind them that could possibly be used. You know, where they could close off sections of their own parking lot, the bank. You know, parking lot might be able to be used for something. It's not really a restaurant right there, but maybe Bistro 73. Could use their parking lot and then, you know, make arrangements with the bank to park vehicles in their parking lot. There's a lot of potential here to do stuff like this, but, you know, my rule of thumb always is, is that cars and people don't really mix very well. And, you know, we have to have some definite safety barriers in place if we're going to be having people picnicking or dining in an area where vehicle traffic is moving through, say, a parking lot or something like that. We have to give that some special thought and consideration.
I just want to throw in, because I was really troubled by paragraph three or section three, which talks about putting up folding chairs in parking spots. I think that's a recipe for an injury. All you need is one driver who's paying attention to his cell phone and plows into a table.
Well, I think it's up to the chief and Glenn and Jeff, you know, if it's in a parking lot, maybe they require concrete barriers.
But again, this is not a parking lot. This, we talked about parking spots. So somebody could apply to take a spot, you know, well, I'll just not pick it on Seti, but you know, on Route 202. You could put up something in the parking spot in front of his establishment.
You can't do it on 202.
Yeah, they can't do it on 202.
But we're really just talking about parking lots.
Okay, as long as we're talking, you know, and I know there was some discussion in the document about fire lanes. I think we just have to be really careful about pushing the edge of the envelope.
Glenn actually called me today and he's on with that suggestion. Because he said in the case of shopping centers, the parking lanes are really just to keep them free of cars. So he has no objection to tables and things like that being there, because they're easily removed. But I'd like to make a point, and the property owners and the business owners have to understand this. That we're not changing, we're not amending any zoning ordinances and we're not amending any site plan approvals. What we're doing is not enforcing those conditions for this resolution.
Jack, I did have a conversation with Glenn today. I had a conversation with Glenn today about fire zones. And I don't think, and Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think his intention was for, to permit people to actively place tables and merchandise and dining tables in fire zones. I think it was more to use for vehicle pickup and curbside delivery. Is that correct, Glenn?
That's correct. I mean, the most, the biggest point is the malls. The strip malls, you know, we have three lanes. You have two travel lanes and you have a fire lane. The fire lane's there because of- The fire lane's there because of the fact that the parking lots are usually full of cars. We don't have that problem right now. So I think we we we, you know, loosen those rules. So that they can do curbside pickup and do stuff like that. In a parking lot where we may have a fire lane, that's where I was talking to Jack.
Right.
May have some yellow striping in a parking lot somewhere. And we may be able to do something there, but I think it's something that we all have to collaborate with. And I did have one question. Aren't we still requiring these vendors and these store owners? To provide certificates of insurance to the town at the time they're making these requests?
I think if it's on if it's on our property, yeah. I I don't think that's going away, is it, Jack? The fact that they have to provide some type of a.
I I I would defer to the risk manager on that. Uh. You know, it it's public property, yes, uh, but they're not really. Probably we should, but I defer to the risk manager. Uh, yeah, you have to understand Glenn and and Chief that this. This resolution wasn't meant to anticipate every situation, you know, it's meant to be guys discretion in applying it while maintaining safety and health standards.
Yeah. Is that is that a question that Anthony? Because I know that, you know, Anthony's going to have to talk to the Jif and have those conversations. Is that a question that Anthony can ask as part of that conversation?
Yes.
I can do that.
Okay.
And and. All these, our potential customers are going to want outdoor dining. At the end of the day, at the end of December, they have to realize that they they got to break it all down. And go to the planning board.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, well, in so Jeff, i- in that thought consideration, as you're very well aware and painfully aware. The new downtown zoning overlay, which deals with some of those issues is going through. Um, my hope is that through deliberation over the summer and into the, hopefully just through the summer, a lot of those longer term issues can be clarified.
Yeah, and then the season will be over in December. So, you you know, we've got time for the next outside dining to kind of rework those.
So. But I but I was just wondering whether there should be some language that states something like that.
Yeah, it should. It should be in the application at the at the bottom, Jeff, I'm thinking.
Yes.
And and Jeff, I I know that we're we're going to be asking a lot of you. Uh, and Chief and Glenn, if this is okay, Jeff, are you willing to put together a draft of? Or should this come from Jack of what a one page application could or should look like?
Uh, Jack and I and Kevin and Glenn can work on that, yes.
Okay, so one one other question for you, chief, and I I know Dr. Hammond talked about the 202 issue. One of the things that's been brought up for consideration as far as an application, because understanding the restrictions of the parking on two or two, those. It's a high volume traffic area. Is some kind of a picnic table? You know, 10 or 12 tables that may be donated by local restaurants possible at the north end of? Of the train station for a period of time this summer?
In the parking lot.
In the parking lot, so folks who get their food at the station, walk across the street if they so desired and sit and sit down at a picnic table and 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 consume it if the if the governor allows?
Kind of over where the Fenwick Park is there, that area. I think Chief is talking.
Sorry, I was I was muted. I'm sorry, I was muted. I was talking away and talking to myself. Um, yeah, I I think it's possible. Uh, we just need to look at it to make sure that we're not going to have any. Any vehicles that are going to be driving into people, right? So, you know, we'll have to look at maybe there's some creative ways that we can create a a barrier or. You know, where where exactly those tables are going to be placed. Um, I know that end of the parking lot is owned by New Jersey Transit, but you know, Jack seems to feel if if we stick to our shopper parking area. We might be able to do something, but I don't know if that's going to going to really be practical. Um, it might involve Jack swapping of spaces so we could take, you know, the complete end of the parking lot. Where we don't actually have vehicles driving by, you know, a place where people are sitting.
Yeah, New Jersey Transit does own those spaces, but we own others closer to the station itself.
Oh, interesting.
So that we actually swapped in in the the lease agreement, we swapped spaces with them. So in my opinion, let's go ahead and use the customer spaces, even though they're owned by New Jersey Transit, because they were part of a swap.
Yeah, once transit, though, if transit starts increasing their train schedule. And and there's a a an increased demand for commuter parking, you know, we're going to have to uh. Have to deal with that. But there's no easy answer to that, Chad, but I think we can look at it and see if we can make something like that work. You may be able to put a couple of tables in the Millicent Fenwick area there. You may be able to put three or four tables in there without doing anything.
Yeah.
And we may have to change things if conditions change as we go along. You know, if it's all sudden a railroad station parking lot is full, we may have to reconsider some of these things.
Yeah, no, collectively, I think we'll come up with something I would I would hope, but.
But is no, are we good with the with the changes to the resolution? Because, you know, we're not going to. Go through every instance here. I don't think there's going to be a lot of unusual requests, I'm sure, but.
Yes.
Will this will this help us to get there?
I think it's helpful and I and I think the point that somebody made earlier that, you know, we might have to change it, you know, every two weeks. If they if something comes up, then we'll just be prepared to change it.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for being so collaborative and Chad for leading this charge. I know he's been talking about it for over a month. Um, and uh, doing a lot of work behind the scenes, Chad. So thanks for um, the thought leadership on this uh, on this change.
No, you're welcome. And really, the thanks go to the chief and to Glenn. I mean, I know that. My Lord, you guys have been asked to do different things so frequently. Um, in this environment. So again, thank you for your flexibility and helping the the town get back to this new normal.
Yeah, for sure. I think the only other thing that I wanted to mention was, you know, I think that we're going to have, I think to Mary Jane's last comment is we're going to have some really creative business owners in town. Um, and I don't know that it's just going to stop at retail sidewalks or, you know, sidewalk sales and outdoor dining. Um, some other um, places might start to get super creative as well. So I I don't know. Um, you know, the volume and things that we'd be looking at. So we might just want to keep an eye on that as well and and what other types of businesses might. Um, come out once they're allowed to start opening too.
Yeah, I think that's brilliant, Gina. And, you know, I think everything's on the table. As long as it's safe and we can effectively manage it and it's within the governor's guidance, right?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that um, I I think it was Olivia brought up at our meeting this afternoon was. With sidewalk sales is having some organization to them because we don't want to have, you know, look like a flea market where there's just stuff all over the sidewalks. So we really have to have some kind of organization as to, you know, when, who's putting what out when, kind of um. You know, and put some thought into it. So uh, maybe, yeah, some kind of organizing task force. And I think um. The Mannings were going to help with any kind of. Marketing or those kinds of things that we needed to do with uh downtown Burnsville to help keep that organized. So thank you, Olivia. I think you're still there and Tim for offering that. And so would Chad, would you like to move your resolution with the changes proposed?
Uh, I can. Give me one second to go back to the correct screen.
Sorry, I made a few people who have their hands raised. Ed English does. I don't know if that's. From before.
Yeah.
I see Glenn Miller, too. Glenn wanted to talk? Let's let Glenn go.
Glenn as well, yeah.
I actually already spoke, so I can actually take my hand down, so.
Oh, okay. Uh, Ed, you had something to add?
Yes, um, actually, uh, you know, I uh, because of this tightening up of restrictions. Uh, had to tell six people, we had 18 people. And I think we were creative about the uh. Winter market and we had 18 people lined up for the summer market and I had to tell six of them not to come. Because I couldn't use the north side of the parking lot, or it seemed it seemed like I couldn't. Be able to use it. So I'm I'm just. A little flustered to hear that suddenly it's going to be open for picnic tables, or it might be open for picnic tables, because I don't. I mean, there were six people ready to come who the the town liked. In fact, someone circulated something, one of the farmers circulated something and said, they won't let me in. Which is kind of embarrassing to me. Uh, but it was because there wasn't much room.
Ed, I think I can, I think I can answer your question here because I think some of that came came directly from me. You know, my concern was when you expanded the farmer's market into the other side. Um, not only were you going to be taking away available parking, and I don't think parking is really the issue. It's really a pedestrian safety issue as far as having a way. For people to move back and forth and not for you to control access to the market. You know, when when you open up both sides of that train station, it's going to be very, very difficult for you to control. How many pedestrians are actually in the market, social distancing? And we have traffic, remember, the entrance and the exit patterns. You can have a lot of vehicles and and people. Are going to be walking from one side of the train station to the other side of the train station. Um, you know, to keep it all contained, made it a lot more manageable. Um, I think than trying to expand into the other side of the market. And then there's no doubt in my mind, if we did that, Ed, we would have to involve New Jersey Transit. And they would be very concerned, I think, about the loss of commuter spaces.
Well, maybe I, I'm sorry, maybe I expressed it wrong then and now. Uh, but what I'm hearing now is a big change because it was just putting some tables at the north end. Well, there could be a couple of vendors at the north end, which wouldn't change any of the traffic pattern that's being talked about. For tables at the north end. So I that that's what I don't.
People, people, not everybody's going to want to go sit at the tables, Ed. I mean.
Right.
And and we haven't, we haven't even made a determination that those tables are going to be permissible yet for many of the same reasons that. I told you, I would not be in favor of you expanding the market to the north side of the train station.
Well, just think about it. I mean, if it if it turns out it's it's the market. And it's contained and it's separate from the south market, so they're not driving from the south to the north.
Not driving, it's walking. It's people walking through the area where the, you know, you've got parking on both sides of the train station and the front there against the wall. And against the building and you see it now when people walking right through the middle of the parking lot, Ed, and people aren't paying attention and cars aren't paying attention. You know, I think.
Yeah, well, it's it's new to me, so maybe, yeah, I I I I just thought I should throw that out. The other idea I had was based. Basically on something that people have done before, sounds around town, where they set up. Bands in various places. And now some of these places are free, like the Audi dealership, Walters. The library is closed now. All those places could make excellent uh little. Quimby Village type dining areas. So, I mean, I think I think it's it's a great direction. Um, I'm just throwing those out to to be considered. Uh, I mean, one thing, this might. Be a little hard to do, but they did have a out, they did have dining in theaters at one time. And I've seen some theaters where they separate the people. I don't know if they could really control it, but our movie theater is closed. I mean, uh, you know, would Setay want to move into the movie theater? I don't know. I mean, you know.
It it's possible, and I I I think Tim said early in this meeting. Um, that he would be willing to allow, and Tim, I don't want to pair, if I misstate, please forgive me. That, you know, some sharing of space. I I think we all need to. And I'll challenge our local businesses and our chamber and downtown Burnsville. We need to think a little differently in how we reinvent. This, whatever the heck this is going to be over the next 90 days.
Great, yeah. Okay, I just, thank you.
Yeah.
And if the farmers are beating up on you, just tell them to come see me. I'll take care of it. If I ask you another question?
What? Yes, please.
What potential do we have for uh the the interior of the train station?
Ja- Jack and I were talking about that just the other day.
For uh, the farmer's market or for?
You know, I I guess it could be for that and and for possibly. You know, in eating area or maybe maybe a place when some of these businesses can operate. I I don't know, you know, maybe for some. You know, to increase capacity for some of these businesses to. Sign up for space to do pop up shops when they're allowed.
Yeah, some moving from the other side of town, getting closer by the train station for walking distance and all that stuff.
Yeah, I I mean, are we allowed to use that building for that right now, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, until until we have a tenant. And we haven't heard back from New Jersey Transit at this point yet about the lease, have we?
So so that's in play, too.
It's in play and there, I mean, yes, there's and there's a lot of considerations there that we can talk about. I I think it is as a.
Is that something, um, Ed, if you had six vendors, could they go inside? The ones you turned away?
Absolutely.
And and you know, the other thing we might be able to do, too, um, maybe you could put those tables inside.
Yes.
Get them out of the parking lot.
That's a good idea, chief.
Yep.
I like that idea a lot.
Cares are easy.
Well, right now you can't eat inside.
Okay.
Not allowed to eat inside, but they could sell, they could have vendors inside selling food, but you can't sit down and eat inside, that's, you know.
But then, but you'd also then would have an increased limitation on the number of people that can be inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if if, you know, you had to turn away six vendors, even if you put two or three of them in there, you could certainly keep them not further far enough apart. I'm just.
Certainly is a challenge for the farmer market volunteers to to control how many people will be in there.
Yeah.
But yeah, but there's, all right, I just didn't know if, I didn't hear any discussion on the building, so I was I was just curious.
Okay, I think that's all in play, chief.
Yeah. Okay, um, Chad, you want to move?
Yeah, I I'll move um, item 10A draft version 103. The resolution holding enforcement of certain borough ordinances and abans in order to assist local businesses is reopened following the lifting of COVID-19 executive orders.
I'll second it.
And that's as amended.
As amended, yes.
Did I hear a second?
I second it.
You did. Okay, so do we want a roll call or just an all in favor?
Let's do a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amera?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chad, for uh, here heading this and. Well, yeah, here we go from here. Um, the next 10B is the New Jersey American water rate increase. We had a proposal to participate. Um, I guess it's in this um. I I think it's, is it Bridgewater or Bedminster that's, let me just get it up here.
Um, Bedminster.
Bedminster that's taking the lead on this.
Yep.
Um, about the increase, the proposed increase in water rates. And our cost to participate was in the $4,000 range, I believe. Let me just, I'm missing it here.
I think it was $4,200.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yeah, I don't know if that's um. Something we want to participate in or not. So thoughts?
So who saves the money in the end? All of our residents? If they if the rates don't go up the full amount that they're asking for, does that affect every one of our residents who has a water bill?
Uh, yeah, the water bill people, not the um, not those that have wells, just those that have public water.
So that's, I think it's um, one third of our population, I think, is water bills.
Uh, are they fighting this without us? I thought we resolved this to kind of let them go off on their own and be be the beneficiaries, whatever they succeeded in doing.
Yeah, it says the number of customers we have is like 1976.
How many households do we have in 1976?
Seven hundred. And so it's.
Seventy seven hundred residents, though, don't we?
Yeah.
Household.
Well, I guess they're going by um, the population. How many people are using the water, not household, you know, they're doing it. It looks like, I don't know, how this chart has um. Number of customers, number we have, how many fire hydrants, 153 fire hydrants, those we pay for the water use, yes?
Yes. But I would I would interpret 1,900 customers as.
Household?
I have a mailing address, that's a customer. I would, I would assume.
That that's a household and we have what? How many households? 4,000, 3,000 something?
Um, I'm just asking, I I don't know, I don't know the answer, but it seems. It seems to me that that 1,900 represents more than one third, that that's all.
Yeah.
I I'm just guessing. I I don't know for a fact.
So do we want to do this or not? We have not budgeted for this, am I correct, Ralph?
That's correct, dear.
If we wanted to, could we do it? I mean, are we are we not able to afford it or legally outcame to it? Is it an option if we chose to do it, Ralph?
Yes, I see. Yes, I mean, something would have to be adjusted, but for $4,000.
Forty two. I don't know. I mean, 4,200, does it save our, does it save our residents money? I think the water bill, something along the lines of, it was double digit percentage increase, I think, that they're asking for.
I thought we had gotten a statement from John McDowell about this and I don't remember what it. I thought we had gotten a statement from John McDowell about this, and I don't remember what it was, he had responded. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's a lot of money.
Forty-two hundred dollars, a lot of money?
I, well, I think so, because they go ahead with it on their own.
Have any other municipalities committed to this? Has everyone joined the the suit, do we know?
I I think they said they had a number of towns already on board.
And if they prevail, we we reap the benefits and don't have to lay out any money. That's what we left at the last time, I thought.
Yeah, actually Bridgewater has a big commitment here.
They're they're asking us for 5.6% of the actual litigation cost.
Right.
I, I don't know, it seems like a reasonable request, if if in the future we wanted somebody to to work with us on joint litigation, I I don't know.
Well, are those fixed or are those, that 4,200 become like, you know, 12,000 by the end of the year?
The way I read it is it's completely fixed and not flexible.
Yeah, it was based on the users, yeah, and we had 1976 New Jersey American Water users, that's how they noted it in there. And the the average bill would increase. The monthly residential bill would increase between, it says $0 and $12.79.
And they did tell me that it was a one time fee, that $4,200. And I I think it's for the water bill, not so much the sewer bill.
Yeah, it is just the water bill, but usually the water bill influences the sewer bill, is that the case in? Is that the case for us, so would our?
I don't think it is, because I think that's the question I asked John McDowell, that it did not affect the sewer bill, it would just be the water bill.
I I feel like I remember hearing the same thing there, yeah.
Anthony, did you say this is, this increase from New Jersey American Water is a one time fee?
No, no, they're legal.
Right, the the fee to to join this.
Litigation.
Thing to to fight it, it's just a one time fee of $4,200 to to join the other towns and fighting it, yeah.
Right, and I think that the the other argument to join would be that the more litigants, the higher probability of winning. I think that's at least was the proposition that was why they wanted us to, one of the reasons they wanted us to join was. More towns makes a better argument than fewer towns, is that correct?
Sounds reasonable.
I believe so.
Yeah, what the American Water is saying, the average monthly residential bill would be between zero and 12,900.
That's the increase, yeah.
Water bill, but the you use 5,400 gallons of water a month, it would go up $6.46 a month. And they're saying they need this money to.
That's $150,000 a year in perpetuity that our residents could save.
Yeah, I think it's worth it.
Forty-two hundred dollars, we could potentially save residents some portion of or all of $150,000 a year into the future.
If you take that 6.46 a month, yeah, multiply it out times the number of users, yeah.
Yep, I think it's worthwhile, that's that's sort of where you're getting to, Tom, right?
That's what I'm heading for.
I I think, I I think I'm circling the wagon with you.
And and this isn't $75,000 worth of litigation, I mean, it is $75,000 worth of litigation, that they're asking us for $4,200 contribution towards. If it strengthens the case and it makes the probability higher that, I mean, look, I think the the outcome is going to be that it's going to be some arbitrated solution where they won't get the full increase.
Right.
It's a lesser increase.
Yep.
And ultimately, you know, we'll still have some increase, I suspect that's what's going to be a negotiated solution. But if it makes it stronger for us to be involved, I think the payback is, the payback is is is.
But we should save more than $4,200.
Well, I would think we would, yeah.
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 Yeah, I like your recommendation, Tom.
Um.
I'd move that we participate for $4,200.
Can we do the resolution now?
I'll second it.
Yeah, as long as Ralph can certify the funds.
Yeah, we could do that.
Oh, right, Ralph has to certify the funds, let's forget that part. Okay, so we had a motion and a second.
Can we restate with the, can we stay with the, with the, what we're voting on now, because there was a lot of back and forth, what, what exactly is the vote?
To approve the 4,200 to contribute to this lawsuit that Bedminster is initiating to. Fight the increase in the water bill for Garden State, was it Garden State Water?
New Jersey American.
New Jersey.
The American, yeah. Okay. Um, let's do a roll call on this.
Ms. Amera?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, so you will let Judy know that we've done this?
Yes.
And, well, we're committed to that amount, so that's, yeah, so even if none of the other towns participate. We're not going to have to pay more because the resolution says 4,200, right?
Right, but I also think that the proposal law also said the same thing, Mayor, I believe. It said that even, you know, regardless of who participates, it can't go up. But if more people participate, it could go down, is what I was told, when I read it, that's what I interpreted.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good, next, we had the boxcar request for drive in theater, we no longer had to have that on the agenda because. They had originally asked about the whole parking lot and they have determined that it's not big enough, so they're working with the King Shopping Center. Which is private property, so it's not, you know, it's up to the center to work out how they're going to do that. Complete?
Chief, sorry, with the chief and both the chiefs and zoning officer, would they have to be informed or anything about what's happening there?
Well, that would be up to the owner of the Burnsville Center to work out those.
Yeah, this is more of a special event, but they'd certainly have to get Health Department approval.
Yeah.
Do we have a special event ordinance?
We do, but it's only been applied over the years to special events on borough property.
Property.
Should we reconsider that, do you think?
I think we should.
I know we've had say as to how they configure their parking lot when they did sounds around town and things like that, Jeff. So, yeah, I mean, I I'd be curious to see what their plans are, there might be, I mean, I'd rather see something. I don't, there's probably other places that might be better suited for this. But there's a lot of traffic in and out of that shopping center.
This would be after hours, it would be late at like 8:30 at night.
Okay, okay.
Anthony, can you, well, it's convenient, obviously it's not urgent, but would you be able to circulate to the council what the special events? Ordinance or language that we have, so we could just all look at it and start thinking about that?
Sure, yeah, I I can send out what what's in the code now and and give you all of the, the whole ordinance for special events, yeah.
Thank you.
Jack, didn't we talk about this a while ago, I think you found, you can, if you can go through your emails, because I know you keep these meticulous records. You'll probably find that we had some sample ordinances, we had talked about this when we had an issue, I think, once before you sent me something, we just didn't get around to doing it.
We've talked about it with council for years, but nothing's happened, but it should be revisited.
There's some models out there, Jeff, that we can take a look at without having to completely reinvent the wheel.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I only bring it up because one of the discussions we had with the, all the candidates for the new recreation director centered around ideas for special events, so. We probably ought to want to get ahead of this.
Yes.
Okay, the. Uh, complete streets. Um, there was in the, in the packet, you had a letter from, and I know Christine's going to love this, right?
Yes.
To do a, a resolution saying that we will participate in complete streets, which really. I think we're already doing most of the things they're asking us to do, but it's just we have never done an official. Resolution saying that we are looking to do this, so they're asking us to. They gave us a sample of Rocky Hills, a complete street policy, which basically says that what we're going to agree to do is. And it says include when appropriate sustainable design elements such as, but not limited to, green stormwater infrastructure practices, traffic calming. Shade trees and other vegetation and permeable pavements, including those made from recycled materials such as rubber, concrete, glass and plastic. And that our master plan and capital improvement plans include where appropriate pedestrian and bicycle design elements. So it's really a lot of what we've been doing, we just haven't made it official, you know, bike lanes, bike parking, wayfinding. It's just really making a commitment to those things by having this resolution. So, is that something we want to do, have Jack work this into a resolution for us to?
Christine, actually Christine and I met with Complete Streets, must have, must have been about nine months or so ago in the fall, I think, Christine. And at the time, they pitched this idea of a resolution, but the language was different. It was, it was mandating us to follow their guidelines, it wasn't, you know, where appropriate or if feasible. It says you will do this, and we both said, well, you know, that, we can't commit to that. So they've, they've clearly backed off on some of their strict language and made it much more palatable.
Yeah.
Well, I think the sample ordinances she showed us. May not have fit with our, I guess, vision for the town, but for me, I I I. I wouldn't say that I didn't agree with what, what they told us, but I didn't think that. It was feasible, or it, I didn't think that some of what was being proposed. Fit with Burnsville, because it was samples from towns that are, although they're in Somerset County, they're a little more congested than ours and their streets are designed differently. So I definitely, I agree with this policy like Rocky Hill has this as our sample. And I definitely think there are some areas that we could just customize it for us. So, yes, I am in favor of this.
Yeah, and and we do get sustainable jersey points for, just for having the policy as well, which is.
Yes, which is grant money.
I think the Rocky Hill language is much better than what they showed us.
Yes, so that, that's what I was going to ask, is what, what are the benefits to us? Because if we're going to spend, you know, borough tax dollars and Jack's time and writing a resolution and things, what are, what are the benefits for us as a borough?
That's, partly is the 25 points for sustainable jersey, which then makes us eligible for grants. To to do some of these programs, you know, to look for ways we can put bike paths in or bike parking and. Making our streets, you know, traffic calming issues, that kind of thing.
How, how many points do we need in order to be eligible for grants and how many do we have?
Um, we are what, silver now, Christine?
We're silver now and. I'm not sure the exact number of points that we have, but we, this year is going to be a little different because we couldn't do the E-Waste as of now. And there's just some other stuff that's still up in the air, but in the resolution itself, it talks about the benefits to the environment, which. You know, to me, that's worth the cost.
Yeah, I'm not against the spirit of everything, I'm just wondering if, you know, if we're already kind of following it and doing it, what is the benefit of. Spending the time and money on a resolution, that's all I was asking.
Yeah, just help us get more points and possibly grant money, which is.
Right.
Yeah.
See, I thought we were bronze, we were trying to become silver.
Oh, yeah, oh, you're right, we are bronze.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're bronze and there are very few silvers in, in the state. And that's actually an aspiration that that I've had for us, but.
Yeah.
It does, it also helps us if we were to do this, I think. The next time one of their technical assistance grants comes up, you know, they'll, they'll look favorably upon people who are part of their program rather than those who are not.
Right, yeah, we we didn't get that last grant that you put all that work into. So, yeah, that would be good as well. And, you know, we have to recert, how often do we have to recertify for?
Every year.
Is it every year, it's not, you don't get to keep it for two or three years?
I think Bob Baker, the chairman, I think he does the submission every year.
Wow, okay, so we could lose our bronze if we don't keep up.
Yeah.
I think that because of COVID, they did give an extension this last year.
Yeah.
It says here for, there's 422 of New Jersey's 565 municipalities are participating. In the certification program.
In the sustainable jersey?
Yeah.
How about in complete, in complete streets, I think the number is very high too. The number of towns in complete street that have a complete streets resolution or ordinance.
Well, this says there's now 15 in Somerset County, and how many, what are there, 21 towns?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I don't know, Jack, can you just?
Yes. It's going to be quick and easy.
Okay, and we'll do it for the next meeting?
Yes, for June 8th.
Um, and maybe we should just run it past the Bob Baker to make sure it's everything that, that it lines up with what they're doing?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, oh, mayor's update, okay, let me do that. We're still working on the, we had another census 2020 meeting. Somerset County has a 69% return rate, we are fourth in the state. Burnsville is, we're at 69.7 and we're ninth in the county. Believe it or not, P-Pac Gladstone is the lowest in the county, and Bernard's Township is the highest in return rate, so. It's, it's been a lot harder to do this now with COVID, so they're working on a lot of new strategies. The governor's call on Sunday, we didn't have one this past week on the holiday. I think I I sent you a summary of what they talked about at the last call, but now they're going to do them every other week on Thursday, so we will not have a weekly call with the governor's office. The mayors for Main Street Alliance, I think we now have 15 mayors on that, so we're working on coordinating policies. Trying to come up with a comprehensive regional approach to help our economies. Getting letters out to our legislators about how we can safely open different businesses and. Hopefully have a little bit of a, an advocacy and lobbying for our small businesses. Uh, we did have the first steering committee meeting for the recreation master plan, which I thought went very well, Gina was on that call as the recreation rep. We went over the surveys, they're working on, Branson or Carol has put together two surveys, so we tweaked that. They're reworking those and there'll be one that gets mailed to everyone, and then there'll be one that you can do online or as a handout. So we should have those doing, the whole process is going to be about 10 months. They have to get a little more creative because we can't do the, the public engagement. Piece of it where they'd have people come and, you know, do different activities, so they've got some other ways to try and get people involved. So we get a lot of input on how we're going to do the recreation plan. I already talked to you about the, just please look at that draft redevelopment plan and get back to me by Tuesday if you have. Anything you want me to then convey to topology, and I will work on getting the. Some small group meetings. I spoke to the superintendent, Superintendent Dempsey today, and. Since we just got the thing on graduation and that they're still working on, they're. You know, don't know what they're going to do, they're still planning to do the virtual, not sure what they're going to do about the July thing, so I saw Tom put his hand up, I'm sorry, did I, did you have a question?
Back on the recreation plan, back on the recreation plan, so you go ahead and finish what you want to say and then I'll bring my question up.
Okay, I think that was it, but I have been in touch with the superintendent pretty regularly and so. Hopefully when they get their plans together, we'll know what's going to happen with that, and I know the chief has also been talking to the superintendent. There's still the, you know, the, they're allowed to have an outside graduation as of July 6th, I believe. But it's based on whatever the capacity numbers will be at that time. So what's confusing is if the capacity is 50 and they've got 200 graduates, they might have to have. have to have four ceremonies. So it's, it's all still kind of up in the air. So they're working it through, they're working on all their different plans. They're also working on September, you know, and openings and that kind of thing. Okay, so that's me. Go ahead, Tom.
So I know one of the reasons that we picked with regards to the recreation plan, one of the things we picked Brandstetter Carroll for, we felt they had a strong prior process that they had used to get statistical survey results. So I know you said there was two surveys and I just wanted to understand or, you know, ask the question that can be answered in a future meeting, that what the statistical basis is for how they're gathering the data and how they statistically analyze it to make sure that it's, you know, representative of an appropriate, you know, cross section of everybody in town. That was my question, doesn't need to be answered tonight, but maybe in a subsequent discussion of the recreation plan and how they're doing it. The other is I think that the emphasis on these surveys then is going to have to be, you know, probably as much or more than we originally anticipated if there aren't going to be as many face-to-face opportunities to provide input. So that just, you know, to me, it highlights how important it will be for us to both, you know, analyze the results and be able to put faith and our belief in the results that we're seeing, that they aren't skewed, you know, one way or another. And that's, I think it's an important thing for us to be aware of, especially in relation to the fact that we're not going to have as many opportunities to meet face-to-face.
Well, it's a really good point too. And this, I may be stating 100% of the obvious, but it's really important that whatever surveys that we're doing right now, aren't being tainted by the current situation with COVID either.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, they're very, they're, they use ETC to do the surveys, which is a, I guess a professional surveying company. And I don't know, Gina, you can jump in here too, because I know there were a lot of questions asked about the returns and I don't remember everything they said, but I know that they're, the whatever they're, the way they do them, they felt the one that's mailed is the most accurate and the most authentic or whatever you want to call it, where the, the one they do online and/or handout is going to be not as accurate. They're not going to use that as much as the one that is done through the mail because that, those will be coded. They'll know which, what address they went to and that's all done by the outside company. That that's all they do is surveys, so.
Right. And my, my recollection, if I'm correct, was that in the original proposal, they said that if they have, you know, an area of town that's underrepresented, it means they, they don't, they don't respond as much as another section of town, then they would go back and they would do additional outreach to those areas that were underrepresented and try and make sure they get a statistically significant sample size from all areas, just, just so that, you know, we're not getting skewed results. And I think that was one of the major reasons we selected Brandstetter Carroll versus one of the other companies.
Yeah, and they do do that. They do monitor where the returns are from.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure it's part of the discussion since I'm not involved, so I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, yeah, we really, we really did drill down on that quite a bit with them on the call.
Do they, are they, do they mail out one survey per household or, or like as was done when we, when the borough had its own survey, I guess about two years ago now?
Yes, it's one per household. The, that's why this, the online one, you can do, you know, like every person in the family could do one if they felt like it. The online one is, is per household.
Yeah, no, I just think I might not be tuned in to what my teenage kid, you know, was interested in in terms of recreation. I think it's important we.
Well, it's more.
Get as broad a reach as we can rather than have one person in a household, you know, speak for the entire household.
It's more like the questions are more about, you know, have you been to the parks in the last whatever, you know? They're not as, I don't know, I can't remember what the, because the one is five pages, the longer one that's mailed. And it was, I don't know more, I don't know. Gina, can you explain it better than I am? I don't know, it's.
I think they said it was, it was, there was more weight put on to the ones that were physically handed out rather than the online ones, because you could get the same person to complete the survey more than once, things like that. And so they just said there was, they would, they weighted the mailed ones more than they did, the more than they will.
Yeah, but it was, it was one per household, right?
I don't remember that exactly. I remember it being statistically significant.
Right.
And, you know, randomized samples and things like that. And they were also checking literal physical locations of the people that responded to make sure that, you know, not everybody from the mountain responded or not everyone from, you know, the other side, another side of town responded. And, and we got a good representation of the entire community. And we even also discussed about going to nearby communities as well, because obviously a lot of people come to, as part of Somerset Hills and use facilities in different, in different towns. It's not necessarily only people from Burnsville that use our facilities or people from Burnsville might go to nearby towns to use their facilities for something.
So what did they decide with that? Are we going to survey folks and, you know, that are like, for example, in our high school catchment area?
Yeah, they said they were going to take a look at, at that and come up with a plan of how, how they would recommend to do that. They also were looking at changing the wording of some of the questions in the survey to make sure that they, you know, included, you know, something within a certain distance or nearby or, you know, kind of just to denote if it was like, if they're going to, you know, a park in Chester rather than here, but their needs are met, quote unquote. And sorry, I'm not on video. My, my, my internet connection has not been stable, so I had to turn it off, but.
So that's all sounds good. I've just, when they give us the results, will they be able to split out the residents from the non-residents, just in case we're seeing a different story from one group versus the other? I mean, obviously, I would weigh the input from our residents, you know, a little bit more strongly than inputs from non-residents, although I think having both of them is valuable.
Yeah.
So they will, they will allow us.
Yes, yes, they'll know from where they're coming, yep.
Great. Thank you.
One thing though, I thought about Mayor, as you were going through your, your update about the rec plan itself, but I was thinking if, if the drive-in movies are going to happen and the farmers markets are happening on Saturdays, maybe that's a way that the people from the rec plan can engage with people in person in the town.
Yeah, we talked about too, is handing out the survey, you know, with, at the food pantry to make sure those people, you know, that population gets copies of it. So yeah, that's a good idea is anytime there's an opportunity to hand it out, just to get input from people who don't usually do those, you know, fill out surveys.
Yeah, or even just do some interviewing, you know, spot a couple of questions here and there, you know, as people are walking around and things like that. But, and, but the food pantry, I was thinking about for the census.
Yes, I had sent Dan Finko some of the handouts, the flyers. Oh, and they also said the survey will be in both languages. So it will be in Spanish and English so that we can have people do them that way as well.
Mayor, we already, we already did distribute a whole bunch of survey information to the food pantry about two or three weeks ago, if you remember as well.
Or what?
Were the, weren't you talking about the census?
Oh, yeah, yes. Yeah, I think that, I know Pastor Dan has been really helping us a lot with the census, with the population that we tend to miss. So that was good.
I mean, and, and Mayor, the only other point I wanted to ask about was the graduations. And I know that, you know, a few, as a few in the superintendent and chief for all talking, I just didn't know if there was anything that we as council could help with, if we can support in any way, you know? I mean, now it seems like if they can do in-person graduations, it seems a little, I think I was pushing more because in the past, because it was maybe that they needed borough property in order to potentially host a graduation of some kind. But now it looks like if they're allowed, they might be able to use their own, their own facilities and properties, but, you know.
And they weren't clear either, you know, when they said it's, it would be the capacity at the time that's allowed at the time, if that included the audience, you know? And so there's a lot, they, they need a lot more guidance, I think, on how this is going to work. Actually, what the superintendent was saying is what they might do is still tape all the speeches and then maybe just do the, the walking part in person, rather than having the speakers do four versions of their speech.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
So yeah, it's going to be interesting.
Okay, well, if there's anything that council can do, that we can do, I'm happy to try to be a part of any brainstorming or anything like that to, to support them.
Thanks, okay. We didn't have any correspondence, did we? Anthony?
No, we did not, no.
Okay. Do we have unfinished business?
You had, I mentioned if you wanted to talk about the subdivision?
Yes.
Yes, that was the only, that was the only thing that I had.
Thank you. Talk to me about that too. So we needed, Jack, you said we needed the council to approve the surveyor? Is that where we were?
The council needs to approve the concept of the subdivision.
Right, okay.
Surveyor to do, and then we can apply for a subdivision for the planning board.
Okay, so, but we can't really, well, if you recall last meeting, we had the, the drawing of how we could subdivide 271 mine Brook Road. There was, he had it in three parcels. So we have to approve that concept before we can have it surveyed and then actually go through with the subdivision, so.
So when we survey it, would it be for the exact sizes as they're drawn on the?
Well, yeah, as within, you know, within that range. I mean, he's not exactly, on his drawing, it was more conceptual because maybe there's a giant tree in this section and you have to move it over two feet.
Right, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, it would be 2.64 acres or 2.63 acres.
Right.
It wouldn't be like 1.2 or something.
Right.
Well, I, I guess I do, I did have a question then because I, you know, I was thinking about it myself. I had a chance to talk to, to one or two other council members. You know, one of the concerns is that if we were to convey that some portion of this and it created a revenue change for, if our property taxes dropped as a result of that, you know, that might be a concern. So I, I was hopeful that we could talk to Ed Kirwin and ask him, you know, about what the existing property taxes would be, what they would be if, you know, we did this subdivision as it's drawn, and if there's a way for us to draw it in a way that, you know, would help maintain our revenues. So before committing to this particular one, you know, if 2.64, 2.63 is the number, I'm just, it would be useful to have Ed Kirwin's input as to whether or not something else would be more beneficial to the borough. You know, I'm just saying, maybe 1.64 makes more sense for the borough's perspective, you know?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that because I thought we were going to get some sort of feedback on what the ramifications would be if we lost that, that ratable because it became farmland exemption.
Right, right now it is farmland, except for the house, you know, the home.
No, we would lose the, the, if we gave up the two and a half plus acres to the resident, we would lose that property.
Lot 27 assessment might go farmland. So I think that, that's why I'm saying if we get Ed Kirwin involved and we said, okay, well, if we convey 2.64, then that could be farmland assessed, lot 27 could be farmland assessed in the future. But if we convey 1.64, then that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be eligible for farmland assessment. I don't know if that's true or not. I'm just saying Ed Kirwin could give us insight before we kind of commit to this one, understandably why they drew it this way. But, you know, I don't know that 2.64 is written in stone. It may be 1.64 is fine. You know what I mean? Like if it's more beneficial, if we said the maximum we can convey before we have a potential revenue loss is 1.692 acres or whatever, then we just draw it at 1.69 then and, you know, we only convey enough.
So you're just talking about the piece in the upper corner, not the, not the mansion corner?
Yeah, there's that, the upper corner that I'm mainly talking about because if you think about it, the 8.68 acre subdivision at the bottom, if that remains our property, then we get no property tax from it.
Right.
Sell it to somebody else, any number of, any amount of property tax we get, it'll be more than what we would get otherwise.
Right.
So I'm not really talking about that 8.68. I'm talking about the 2.64. And if there's a way for us to do it, that protects the borough's interests.
And the other consideration that was discussed, Tom, is possibly, you know, in regards to access and whether or not a joint access in the front that then, you know, basically was a joint driveway for the first so many yards that they would then deviate off.
On the 8.68 acre subdivision. Yeah, and to Chad's point, you know, I think I, I talked to Jack Pigeon, he said that we could have an easement that allows us to use the existing driveway and that, that we would sell off the 8.68 acres contingent on that easement. And then in the future, if we wanted to add another driveway, it wouldn't prevent us from doing that.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking about the costs that it, that we would incur in order to, in order to do that. Because right now it's actually very nicely landscaped in the, in the front of that lot. And so, yeah, anyway, okay.
So Jack, we, we could, we could sell off the 8.68 acres with an easement to allow us access up, you know, up and then over to the right onto our property, right?
Yes, now green acres would probably not reimburse us for that portion that has the easement on it, but yeah.
Well, that, that portion that has the easement on it would be sold to the other landowner anyway.
Anyway, yep, I agree.
So, but to Tom's point, is it, I mean, Mary Jane, I, I don't know if this needs to get resolved tonight. Is it possible to have Ed Kirwin answer some questions for us as we proceed down this path?
Yeah, I guess we could do that. He's not in, he's not in the office, right? What is he in, Ralph? Or is he? Wait, you're muted, you're muted.
He has, doesn't have, he does come into the office and, and I certainly can get a hold of him. I mean, there's no problem with that.
Okay, so can we do that? I know, you know, we're kind of on a time clock to get this done.
Okay.
Before the end of the year. So, you know, I don't want to waste too much time going.
I'll reach out to him. I'll be in the borough tomorrow, I'll reach out to him.
So the question Ralph is, what, what number of acres conveyed to lot 27 protects the borough's interest in terms of future property tax assessment and collection? If the answer is zero, then the answer is zero. But if the answer is one or 1.2 or 1.8 or 2.64, he can help us answer that question.
Got you.
So can we, can we, like, do what you asked for, Mary Jane, which is move this forward, agree to send it on once Ralph gets the answer to that question?
Well, you still, you don't know if we've all agreed on the sharing the driveway easement. Because the way it's, the concept that's proposed was to have a separate, that was the, whole driveway was included with the, the house. And he had a second entrance on the other piece, like down on the far right.
Yeah, but we still sell off the entire 8.68 acres as drawn. All we would ask for is that the, whoever buys it allows our traffic to come in and, you know, you could have a sign that says, you know, municipal property this way, you know, the mansion this way.
Yeah, it would be a common entrance that essentially has a Y and then it, it would bifurcate and it would.
I mean, it does it, it does it already. I mean, we just need a sign to tell the people which way to go. I think that we as a, as a borough, we should, we should agree that that's a good idea for us. That's, that works in our favor. And later on, if we need, if we want to add an entrance, a separate entrance, we certainly can. But this would at least make it so that we don't have to have the separate entrance. It won't be landlocked, we'd have a way in.
Yeah, I mean, my only hesitation is that, and I agree 100% with what you're saying, but what I keep thinking about is that road is really narrow, like two road, two cars couldn't even go in and out at the same time. So I feel like we're gonna, you know, and I was thinking about the whole entrance thing too, because I think it will be expensive to excavate and, you know, whatever. So good thing that the resolution passed last year, but yeah, I, I don't know that we could even do two cars back and forth. But, I mean, we don't have to determine that now. And to your point, Tom, it's 8.6 whatever acres and that, that remains.
Yeah.
Well, likely it would be easier to widen the driveway rather than create a whole new one.
But it's so pretty.
It is really pretty.
It's not a road, it's a driveway. So, you know, you could just do a little like, you know, pullout, you know, that we have on some longer driveways in our town. You have like a little pullout section where one car can go off to the side a little bit. Anyway, I think, I think the easement is in the borough's interest, so I don't think it's a hard decision.
Well, the pitch and buyer has been in touch with.
Well, the manager buyer has been in touch with us recently. I mean, has this what's going on changed people's plans? Because an easement would take out anybody looking at as a residence, I think. Because you wouldn't want like.
I disagree. We have multiple shared driveways in our town already.
Well, no, if you if you if you're sharing a driveway with a park or some public space, somebody one of the residents would probably say, well, you know, I'm not going to pay for that. Because, you know, if you're buying that house, you want, you know, you don't want to share it with anybody.
All they all they'd have to do is just put a little gate up on their side of the driveway and everybody and a little sign that says.
I don't know. I think I don't know. At that price point, I think I'd be, I'd have, you know, reluctance about that.
Which what price point are you talking about?
Well, I mean, if you're talking about selling the house, I mean, if you're looking at, if somebody wants to have an establishment, you know, I can see that would make sense. But if someone's looking at the buyers looking as a residence, I think that would be off putting. You know, you might just widow down a pool of buyers is all I'm saying.
To to Tom's point, though, I I think the decision that we need to make in the in the most near term, so whether or not we have an agreement in the sale that we have an easement to use it um is is a issue down the road. I think that the bigger issue which Mary Jane needs, which is the survey, is really, you know, has to do with what the size of that northern lot is, right?
And actually, we would probably need an easement, at least even in the beginning. We may not later, but if, you know, until we get a road through, we wouldn't be able to access our property at all. So at least for the, you know, initial part of the uh subdivision, we would need an easement to just get there and do if we wanted to do work in there and even make that road, we'd need to get through, so.
I I I think the I think the easement saves the borough a lot of money of adding another driveway. I think the the easement does not devalue the property significantly. And I think in negotiations, if somebody comes in and offers us, you know, a ridiculous amount of money, but says they don't want the easement, then they can negotiate that out during the.
As long as you have flexibility on that point, I don't want to lock ourselves in.
I'm I'm checking.
We have to publicly bid it.
Later.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, we have to publicly bid it, but we could have alternate bids, you know, with and without the easement and see what it.
Okay.
What the difference is.
Okay, all right, so we will Ralph, you'll check with uh the tax assessor and we'll see if we can get that ready for next meeting.
But Mayor, to your request, I think we could we could approve the survey idea once we get uh Jack's uh the question answered from Ralph. Uh, do we want to hold on that time?
We will have it on uh, well, now let's we have to approve the whole conceptual plan, yes? So would we have to have him redo the the plan based on what we learned?
No, because once we have, once you all decide on the concept, then we'll get it surveyed to go in before the planning board.
So we'll so we'll have to bring this back up on June eighth?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Um, Tom, can you just ensure, so can you work with Ralph to, because I you and I talked about this? Can you just ensure that the questions, we get the right answers? Okay.
That's okay with me. If that's okay with everybody else.
It's fine by me.
That's good. Thanks, Tom.
Okay.
Um, new business?
Um, sorry, I had just one quick question about the unfinished business. Um, you know, we had our strategic vision session a while back and I know COVID has probably stalled some things, but I was just wondering what the next steps were on that.
Um, I when I reached out to the uh two people from Rutgers who did the first thing and they were currently furloughed, so uh they're hoping to be called back. Um, so we were kind of waiting for them. Um, you know, I can reach out to them again and just see what the status is. If they're not coming back, then maybe we have to uh find a different facilitator so we can move on.
So can can we, I mean, look, I know that it was very nice that they were free because they were working for Rutgers. Can we find out what they would cost to facilitate a two thirds day session if they were just hiring them as private contractors?
Uh, we could do that. Yeah, I'll give them I'll reach out to them and see where they are on that.
I suspect their their price has probably come on down now that.
I I I was willing to bet the same thing, Jeff, but I didn't want to say it publicly.
Okay, do we have new business?
Well, yeah, I had something I'd like to raise. Um, it's actually I didn't think about it until this uh this meeting tonight. And, you know, given all the discussion about the resolution that uh we passed on the suspension of uh of uh some of the outdoor dining and uh sales issues. And then now the recent discussion about um the two seventy-one mine brook and the fact that we have to make decisions. And I'm just wondering, since things are moving so quickly, whether we need to add meetings onto our calendar. Uh, our next meeting is not till June eighth and then we have one after that is June twenty-second. And then in July, we only have one meeting. In August, we only have one meeting. Uh, should we start, should we think about? And it may it's a burden, there's no question about it, but maybe we need to add on some extra meetings. We maybe in the next month, we even need to meet weekly. There's going to be a lot of lot of things are going to be changing. Things coming out of the governor's office, I suspect, will be happening almost daily.
I I mean, we can, we need, what, forty-eight hours notice? So I think we can call a meeting as the as the need arises rather than committing to meetings and then having to try and cancel them if there's nothing on the agenda. You know, and to just call a special meeting when we need one rather than because, you know, we're also adding our meetings to our staff people here.
Yeah, I understand that, but um I think we're going to have to be pretty nimble. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, well, we could do uh, you know, forty-eight hours notice, which I think would be enough if we have something we have to act on.
Yeah, I mean, I think just scheduling um maybe will be a trouble. What if we like put just some like, you know, maybe and we could do this offline, but just get some dates pre-aligned with everyone? So we kind of put holds on our calendars or things that we at least have quorums for those? Because I think the last special meeting, we we almost didn't have a quorum, but.
I I I'm I'm willing to 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 meet more if it if it's needed. So um all hands on deck as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, you know, I think it's easier to call a meeting than to cancel one sometimes, so once you've publicly announced it, yes?
Well.
Jack?
Well, I don't think it's a legal issue. Yeah, I mean, it's easy to call a meeting.
What do we have?
Too, but but the thing about a special meeting is, well, you've got to give a topic. But we they don't be special meetings at this point, any we add on. So you have to publish the agenda forty-eight hours before anyway.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I maybe just.
I don't see a need that we have to meet more at this right now. I, you know, I think we're getting done what we need to get done, but uh and really, right now, you know, OEM is really on top of everything that there's almost less for us to be voting on. Um, I don't know, I.
I'm happy to pre align some dates in case some meetings are needed. I mean, that's fine by me.
We could do, you know, like all the Mondays since we've got a Monday. And just keep them open.
And may and maybe that's the approach, you know, every Monday, seven o'clock, we'll we'll pencil it in. We'll typically know the week before.
I think that's reasonable to ask people to hold Mondays open.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and, you know, if somebody can't do it, you know, we still maybe we'll get six out of seven people who can, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does does that sort of meet your your thought and need, Jeff? If we say, look, we're going to keep all Mondays open by the Wednesday of the previous week or Thursday, we'll announce if we need a meeting, the in-between meeting. Um.
Yeah, I think it it does. Thank you. And I think uh, you know, we're looking ahead. The governor's got a self-imposed deadline, I think it was June seven, where he had originally said he had extended the state of emergency until that date. So either it's going to get extended longer or it's going to be released. Uh, so which means probably a whole lot of decisions will have to be made on on June the eighth, which is our next meeting. But then we may need to have more frequent meetings after that to assess what's happening, how we're going to respond, uh, what's working, what's not working, you know, what unanticipated problems come up. So, yeah, I think if we are willing to um, you know, through uh June and July to sort of hold Mondays um so that we could meet if we needed to. Uh, and I think because the issue of a quorum is a good one, then that would work.
Okay, so do that. Put those on your calendar and we'll see, you know, week to week how it goes. Um, any other new business?
Uh, just real quick, Jeff and I on Friday had a call with the director of the Torres Summerville. They are interested in doing uh making uh the next year's, you know, Memorial Day race is sort of a more county-wide event that that's prominent in the national calendar. Like to do like, say, a race here and a race in Baskin Ridge in two days leading up to the Monday. They deliver the whole race. Our commitment would be, you know, basically, you know, providing a safe, spectator-friendly course. You know, uh, engage the community, engage, you know, businesses and sponsors and do family events. So it was kind of just a statement of interest and we're going to, I think, circle back in a week or two with a little more detailed conversation. But it's uh, you know, it's interesting and exciting, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you.
Um, today there was an email from Ed English about the free tree event being rescheduled. So that's June tenth from nine to one at the pool parking lot. And a press release is going to go out about that soon. So so people want free trees to plant. That's June tenth.
Okay, and did you have the time on that?
Nine to one.
Nine to one, okay, thank you. Uh, okay, we have our second open session. If anyone from the public wants to speak, um, please go to uh participants and put your hand up. Um, Olivia, I see Olivia's hand is up.
Or Tim.
Or Tim, whoever.
It's me. Hi, it's me.
Hi.
Um, I'm sparing everybody the video at this moment. Um, I, yes, we're still here. Um, further to what Chad had mentioned earlier about all of us sort of getting together in downtown Bernisville and um Chamber and whomever, I regardless of what anyone else wants to do, obviously, we are totally on board with whatever you guys need from us. Um, we do have our mailing list. We have our Facebook following growing constantly. Luckily, we haven't been inundated with uh negativity, although it did come close, but we did seem to stop it in its tracks. Um, so whatever we can do, we obviously are on board. Um, what is obviously important for whatever it is that is decided, whether it's uh sidewalk sales for the town or uh outdoor dining, you know, whatever ends up happening. Um, a a campaign of some kind, it doesn't have to be huge, extensive, expensive, all of those things, but a campaign in some way um to promote the town in as positive a manner as possible is really what's needed. And if it's whether, you know, we are doing it and obviously as a main street organization striving to be main street organization, you know, that's part of what we do. Or if it's the the borough that's able to do that uh with, you know, whoever works on your website or, you know, whoever would be involved, honestly, it doesn't matter. It just it needs to happen. There needs to be a promotional campaign that brings people to the town in a way that reminds them that we're here, reminds them that we're available to give them whatever service, food, you know, whatever they need, whatever they want, um, and and gets people to come back. Not not just come one time and and shop and buy and whatever, but to come back again. So whatever is decided, however we are moving forward in whatever crazy world we're in now, um, it it needs to be considered to be a long-term strategy, not just something that we need to do quick and have a quick fix. It's like having a diet that you do once and you gain all the weight back later. Like, it's it's it can't be that way. Uh, we need to think long term. So, you know, again, whatever we can do, obviously, to help, I have twenty years marketing experience. I I know what's involved here. That's why I I think our events do pretty well because, you know, I know how to reach people. I know how to talk to people with this kind of stuff. So being that we can't do any of our events this year for the most part, you know, I'm I'm happy to jump on board with whatever we actually can do um to be productive. So that's all I wanted to say and and hopefully, you know, we'll see some changes soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Olivia, and.
Thank you, Olivia. Um, I know, you know, you do this all as a volunteer and we appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Um, Glenn, do you have your hand up again?
I do. Just wanted to say, um, you know, to 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 the council and you, Miss Mayor, you know, our paid people that we have beating Ralph and Jack and Jeff and Anthony, I I just want you guys to understand that they've all been, you know, reachable and approachable and have dealt with things as we've needed them. So, you know, I greatly appreciate that. But I think everyone needs to understand what the police department's been going through and the fire and EMS has just been, you know, a little unbearable. And uh, you know, my hat's off to Kevin for the effort that his lieutenants and sergeants and patrolmen have put forth to uh protect our town and to work through this. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. And uh, yeah, they really are doing a a tremendous amount of effort here and and, you know, these are circumstances I don't think we ever expected to be in, so. Uh, and you have all risen to the occasion, so thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, um, I don't see anyone else's hand up. So I will close the public session and um I guess we have executive now, yes?
Yes.
Would someone like to move that we go into executive? Will we be and we will be coming out.
We will, yes.
Returning, so.
Yes, we will.
I'll I'll move it.
A second.
Okay, can we take a uh two-minute break here for a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Okay.